Right?
We're live?
Yes.
All right, call the meeting to order, the common council meeting of July fourteenth at seven forty-four P M. If you would rise for the pledge of allegiance. Meeting of pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States. And to the republic. For which it stands.
What you say.
Nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Capola, if you would be kind enough to call the roll. And read, well, if you can read the announcement.
I'm not gonna, maybe if, 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 Mayor, your honor could read the, the announcement for me, I appreciate that, but I will take the roll call vote of the council, starting with Councilman Burnett.
President.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Langella.
Here.
Councilman Satchinelli.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Huberman.
Here.
Councilman Roberts.
Present.
Councilman Dumas. Councilman Young.
Here.
I'm Councilwoman Young, I apologize, Councilwoman Young. Uh, Councilman Tides.
Present.
Councilman Theorides.
Here.
Councilman Keegan.
Here.
Councilman Serenites.
Here.
Councilman Livingston.
Here.
Councilwoman Shanahan.
Here. I have a question, didn't we say we saw Ernie's number, phone number?
I thought so, yeah.
Yeah. Is he still there? Can anyone see that?
Is that his number, though?
Six, five, five, zero, maybe?
Or are we assuming that it's his?
We changed his, his number to his name and he's muted, so he needs to unmute himself and say he's present.
For the record, for the record, we've identified that Councilman Dumas is, is present at the meeting, although he may still be muted. And, and more important, more importantly, your clerk is back. Your roll call vote is completed. Everyone is here, Donna.
All right, now, Ms. King, if you could read. The instructions for people that are tuning in. Or wish to make a comment.
He's still muted.
I'm muted.
There she goes.
Okay, yeah, I had to go to Plan B, I had to go through a whole other process, okay. Uh, good evening. This meeting is being recorded for rebroadcast. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name when called upon by the presiding chair, members of the public can access the meeting by telephone, Zoom, or the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. Thank you.
Okay, uh, first item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of June twenty-third, twenty-twenty, do I have a motion?
Good, Burnett, so move.
May by Mr. Burnett, are there any corrections, additions, deletions, or omissions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as submitted. Opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, so the count, we had, everybody was here, if we had fifteen councilmen, Mr. Capola? Okay, so.
Yes, Mayor, we had, we had fifteen councilpeople.
It, it's unanimous. Okay, next item on the agenda is public participation. Uh, do we have anybody that has registered to speak, Mr. Manzi?
Um, i- if you're calling in or dialed into the Zoom meeting and you wish to speak, please raise your hand electronically now.
Mr. Bryant is raising his hand. Mr. Bryant.
Mr. Bryant, I don't see him, I see a Jason Milligan.
No, we have Mr. Bryant, uh, he's on the Zoom meeting. So, Mr. Bryant, you're muted if you wish to speak.
Thank you, I just unmuted myself, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out how to do it electronically, so I had to do it the old fashioned way. So, um, I'm, uh, speaking about the, uh, Wall Street place of the, uh, also known as the Poco project. And, uh, uh, I've been working with redevelopment for the last X number of months, uh, along with, uh, the McClutchie's and, uh, uh, Bill Crosskey, uh, to improve the design that they started, a- and, and, and to be, be fair, they have done a lot of work and the design as it now stands is vastly superior to what they started with. Not to say that it couldn't get better in the, in the course of, uh, design review and the, and, and the other, uh, things that have to happen to this proposal, but it's a lot better than it was and they, uh, they got full credit for a lot of effort for that, as does Brian Bedoli at redevelopment. There, you know, the changes that were made allow this building to fit better into the historic district, it's right in the center of the district, it's gonna be there for longer than any of us will. And it's really important to get it right because there's no second chance for this, we're only gonna do it once. I think that whatever changes need to be made at this point are relatively small. And, uh, I, you know, thank everyone that was involved for getting as far as we have and, uh, and I, I, uh, I hope it continues to improve, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Sorry, Scott Bryant, twenty-three Morgan Avenue, president of the Norwalk Preservation Trust. I'm rusty at this.
Mr. Manzi?
Uh, Mr. Burnett, can you make me co-host? I lost power earlier, so I made him host, so, so we don't lose the meeting. We do have Jase, Jason Milligan.
All right.
Uh, I'm still not co-host, Mr. Burnett, if you can make Jason Milligan allow him to, to speak.
Larry, I just made you the host.
No, that wasn't me.
Oh, that wasn't you, I'm sorry, hold on, who was, okay. So who is that?
My name is just City of Norwalk. I believe that the other one is Craig Schmidt, I believe.
Norwalk Zoom two? Who is Norwalk?
That's not me, that's Craig Schmidt, so Craig, if you, Craig, if you can make me the co-host.
Mr. Manzi is the city of, it says City of Norwalk.
Right, there was two of them up there.
Well, there's, uh, there, there's a symbol, it says John Kides. And then.
Mr. Burnett, if you could make me City of Norwalk co-host? Or host of, or just co-hosts, if you could. I don't think you can make me host anymore.
I made the, whoever is Norwalk Zoom two is currently the host. And I am.
Is that you, Craig? Craig, if you can make me hosts? Well, now we've.
Meantime, I have three letters.
Okay.
All right.
We'll get this right, who is Norwalk? Zoom two?
I assumed it was Craig Schmidt.
Was that Suzaka?
Is it Suzaka? Where is Suzaka?
Her name appears.
I think you said dude. No, I'm not Zoom two, no.
Suzaka, do you, do you, if, if you look, can you, uh, mouse over my name and see if it can say make host? Under panelists?
Right now, there's, Larry, right now, there's only one host, and that's whoever is the Norwalk Zoom two, and, um, that person needs to unmute themselves and identify themselves.
I don't see who that is.
Now I'm not listed.
See that either.
Oh, boy, um.
I can leave the meeting and get back in, since I'm not host, it, it won't.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably the best idea.
Let me try that.
We have to move this meeting forward.
I'll be right back.
I don't feel so bad now. I do. Hey, Donna, I got a long agenda to read, so.
Okay, Larry, you're now the co-host.
There we go, that's better, all right. Mr. Milligan, you are allowed to speak.
Hello?
Yes.
I'm amazed, he finally got this started, I could have had this whole project built by the time he had the meeting started. I, who is in charge of my timing, cuz I don't wanna have a contentious relationship on the Zoom call?
I'm in charge of your timing.
So, right now, I'm the only one scheduled to speak, and I don't believe I have more than three minutes.
Well, you've got three minutes like everybody else, so start now because you're wasting tw- time right now.
Well, let's hope not, okay, so in the past year. This project has gone completely underground, there have been zero public meetings, there's been zero information released, and nine D days of Freedom of Information requests were denied. So, this was not made public, it was deliberately kept secret, and it was then unloaded on everybody twenty-four hours ago, four hundred and seventy pages, there's no way that you councilpeople have the possibility of absorbing that information and deciding on it, it's impossible, and nor have you been presented with any other options. Poco twenty-twenty is a bad deal for Norwalk. Poco's been around for thirteen years, but this exact project was introduced on June twenty-fifth, some of the details were light on that date, and yesterday we got the full details. The common council and the public have had exactly twenty-four hours. Here are some of the details, Norwalk would be donating four point four million dollars to this project. Norwalk has already donated a big parking lot that used to fit a hundred and twenty cars. Norwalk gets nothing for that four point four million, McClutchy and Citibank get richer, McClutchy is already a multimillionaire. He splits time between his mansions in Darien and Naples, Florida. He owns racehorses, he lives the high life, he does not spend time in Norwalk, and he does not care about Norwalk. McClutchy wants to make ten million dollar developer fee on this deal, there are many local builders that are willing to build it for one million. The original Poco project had four point four million dollars approved for actual infrastructure, which made sense, given the overall size and scale of that project. There were lots of details given about that infrastructure, it was for the entire area, it involved six acres, thirty-two properties. The four point four million was to build entire new streets, sidewalks, decorative street lamps, new sewer lines, electricity underground for the whole area. The four point four million was for three large projects in three phases, it would have created three to four hundred public parking spaces. This project has fake infrastructure that McClutchy claims was already been installed, he wants to recoup money wasted on things like wacko vending machine parking spaces. McClutchy claims they spent two point eight million on infrastructure already, so most of the money will go to reimburse previous mistakes. The current proposal gives no detailed list of infrastructure, nothing in that packet has infrastructure, McClutchy gets the cash and Wall Street keeps broken sidewalks and potholes. If McClutchy drops his fee down to five or six million, then Norwalk can keep the four point four million, and McClutchy will still make five times more than any other developer would. What does Norwalk get with Poco twenty-twenty? Thirty-four apartments that are actually below market rates for the area, or affordable, the rest are expensive, charging above market rates for the area, yet using hocus pocus and magic formulas, and they get to call them affordable. Without any special treatment, a project of this size in Norwalk would require ten percent affordable units.
You're now at three minutes, Mr. Milligan, if you would wrap it up?
I'll wrap it up, but you, don't count the time that I was asking the rules, Mayor, okay, give me a break.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna hold you to the time, we've got a lot of, uh, uh, items on the agenda.
Yes, by design.
The other people.
Any other builder would have to build sixteen affordable apartments for this same project. We're getting a net of eighteen out of this, four to, four point, four million, a whole parking lot for a net of eighteen, that's two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per unit. And just quickly, let's talk about possibly the worst tax deal ever by a municipality, the City of Norwalk is gonna get less taxes, they're gonna collect less taxes from this hundred million dollar project than they currently get. If you do nothing over there, Norwalk gets more tax revenue than if they build a hundred million dollar project, how the hell does that make sense? Make McClutchy pay his fair share at the very least. What we don't get with this deal?
You're at four minutes.
No public parking, no infrastructure sidewalks, no roads, no street lamps, no increase in tax revenue, no significant number of affordable apartments.
All right, Ms. King, who do we have now? You have three letters to read?
I do. The first.
Mayor, hold on, I do have one other person with their hand up.
Okay.
Us, where'd she go? Uh, she put her hand down, I no longer see her.
And who was that?
Uh, oh, the, Jean, Jean Morel. I see people put their hand up, but then immediately it goes down for some reason, does anyone else that'd like to speak, please put your hand up now? Okay, no one else, Mayor?
Okay, Ms. King, if you would read the letters that you have into the record?
This is from Patrick McMahon. It's addressed to the council president and the members of the common council. The Connecticut Main Street Center, C M S C, works with communities across the state to foster vibrant downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. We promote a comprehensive approach to revitalization, which includes small business development, historic preservation, downtown housing, and creative placemaking, among other elements. The Wall Street area with its National Register Historic District is a treasure, the neighborhood, including West Avenue, Wall Street, Main Street, and beyond, is very walkable, with plenty of, of options to enjoy, like the Public Library, Freeze Park, Norwalk River, Wall Street, Theater, Art Galleries, Shops, and several ethnic eating establishments. With public and private investment, over the last decade, the area is becoming an attractive location to live, work, and play. It will get even better if the long-stalled Wall Street Place project can move forward under the current proposal before you. The existing condition of the site has resulted in negative perceptions of Wall Street. Once construction begins anew, these perceptions will fade away, and residents, visitors, business owners, and potential investors will be drawn to Wall Street for the vibrant neighborhood that it was, it has the great potential to be. We urge the Norwalk Common Council to take the steps necessary to move the Phase One construction of Wall Street Place forward, as it will be a catalyst for further enhancements in the area. Norwalk is fortunate to have an experienced housing developer, J H M, willing to pursue this challenging project, utilizing the current building shell, as well as the former cinema property. They plan to create an attractive mixed-use, mixed-income development with a hundred fifty-one residential housing units, ten thousand two hundred thirty-three square feet of retail space. Their plan has required creativity, and they have a respected team, including cross-key architects and redness in mead for civil engineering assisting on the project. They've been responsive to the public's desire to add architectural detail to make it more compatible with the surrounding historic buildings. They're also willing to work with the Norwalk Arts Commission to provide retail space to further the area as an art.
Three minutes now on that letter.
Okay.
Wrap it up.
I'll just read you the last paragraph, the Wall Street area is an exciting and critical jun- at a cr- critical juncture. Continued investments in streetscapes, housing, historic preservation, small business development, public facilities, green space, and human capital will help the, the historic downtown come to life. And, uh, obviously, that is signed by Patrick J. McCann, McMahon, CEO. I have two others on a different subject.
Okay.
This is from Diane Lauricella, addressed to the common council, the president and the mayor, the council president and the mayor. Also to Chairman Burnett from Finance and Claims. Regarding the motion to table West Rock School Artificial Turf Soccer Complex Design and Construction Funding. Hope this email finds you safe and well, please enter this comment into the record, I ask that you table items D one and D in two A, two B, unless and until you have the facts about this design and build and build project, including alternative materials, otherwise add a simple written caveat to include preliminary research review by a qualified neutral party tied to the permission for Recreation Parks Committee Items D one and D two. I've not heard from either of you or staff about my reasonable request, before you vote, I believe you need this information, our children's future health outcomes may be affected by your choice. For sports field surfaces and materials, show that you care about this issue by either tabling the items related to West Rocks, or add a well-worded caveat about first doing a thorough review using a qualified neutral party. I've included below my email from June, and I've appeared before both of your committees over time in over two years ago. And she includes a link to an E H H I report. Sincerely, Diane Lauricella. And on the same subject, a response to her response, thank you, Diane, this is from Audrey. Where am I here? Audrey Cozzerin, C O Z Z A R I N. And Audrey is Chair of the Oak Hills Park Nature Advisory Committee. Thank you, Diane, for pointing out the many reasons to avoid astroturf for use in playing fields, the PFAS toxin and other environmental health issues are too numerous to ignore. Grass lawns are more natural if they are not contaminated with Roundup and other toxic chemicals, not good for the earth and certainly not good for human children, please all avoid artificial turf, there's no place for it any longer on this earth in Norwalk and around our kids. That's everything.
Mr. Manzi, is there anybody else that wishes to address the council?
Uh, yes, we do have one other person, Samantha Avalone. Uh, Samantha, you are unmuted. Uh, please let me.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, um, I was just wondering, I had actually asked in the comments, but, uh, my comments were all dismissed, I was wondering why no one addressed anything that Jason said. And I'm also curious, um, about what the plan is for Isaac Street, I live in the neighborhood and the street needs to be repaved badly, so do the sidewalks. Um, and I'm wondering what your plan is, since that's gonna be directly affected with Poco.
Well, generally, uh, we don't end up answering questions, we just take comments, uh, I would recommend that you contact Anthony Carr, who's on this, um, uh, meeting. And he is the Director of Operations and, or the Chief of Operations, and he can give you the plans, uh, for Isaac Street. Um, and as you can imagine, that if the plan is moving forward as designed, uh, it will be paved once all the utilities and all the other hookups and connections are done.
So it's just gonna continue to get worse until the construction is done in a couple of years? And how do I contact him? I have no idea how to contact this person, could you point me in the right direction?
Mr. Carr, uh, yeah, he's the Director of Operations, and if you go on the department or on the, uh, city website and go into the Public Works, uh, you, you'll see his email. His email is A Carr, A C A R R at norwalkct.org.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Manzi, is there anybody else that wishes to address the council?
No, there isn't, Mayor.
Okay, that, moving along, that brings us to, uh, appointments. And let me get back to my. Uh, you may wish to put the agenda up, but under resignations and appointments, we have no resignations. For appointments to the Arts Commission, we have Matthew O'Callahan, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Ms. Smith makes the motion and comments, Ms. Smith?
Yes, I do have some comments about Matt, uh, Matt is a recent Norwalk High School graduate, a member of the Marching Bears, he was drum major. Um, and he comes from a very talented musical family, he's a very talented young man himself, and, uh, was an excellent student at Norwalk High. Um, I know his family through my, um, my volunteer work with the Marching Bears, and Matt has, um, he's going off in a different direction from the rest of his very musical family, who've all gone off, um, to, uh, to do very well in music. Um, and has, um, shown an interest in political science, and he has recently become very involved in the, um, District D meetings, the G T C. He's currently interning for Lucy Dathan and for Stephanie Thomas, and he's just a, a fine young man, very talented, and I think that he'll bring a musical perspective to the Arts Commission, um, and I think he'll do very well, so I, I fully support his appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, are there any further comments regarding the nomination of Matthew O'Callahan for the Arts Commission? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motions carries unanimously. Next appointment is for Tanner Thompson for the Bike Walk Commission, do I have a motion?
I'll move that, um, as well, Mayor.
Ms. Smith moves?
Yes, um, Mr. Thompson is a graduate of Brigham Young University, um, also, he's, uh, currently working as a software engineer with Google, and has done a great deal of volunteer work with his, um, with his church, and is, uh, and through his resume, it's very clear that he wants to give back to his community and, and serve his community and be involved, so I support his nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by raising your hand?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next item is, uh, appointment to Denise Brown for the Oak Hills Park, do I have a motion?
I'd like to, uh, move that, Mayor.
Mr. Keegan?
Yeah, I'm honored to move Ms. Brown's name forward for nomination to the Oak Hills Park Authority. Uh, Ms. Brown has an extensive resume of volunteering in the community, she's had leadership positions in the beachside soccer club, various tenor and soccer, uh, tennis and soccer organizations. And she brings to the Oak Hills Authority a valuable bookkeeping experience and a strong background in tennis, both, both of which are needed skillsets there, um, it's my pleasure to move her forward.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Uh, Mayor, so, one of the council persons have, has their hand up?
Okay, I'm sorry, um.
They did, they just took it down, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, uh, again, of, of Ms. Brown for the Oak Hills Authority? Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Ms. Tamara Shockley for the Planning Commission, do I have a motion? Ms. Young?
Yes. I have a motion to, um.
Yes, Ms. Young.
Speak to, uh, Ms. Shockley, um, Ms. Shockley has lived in Norwalk for several years and has raised her son here, um, and as you can see from her, uh, resume, she has a very impressive resume, um, she's an attorney, um, has had extensive experience in law and working with the U N and, and go on and on about that, but I think what's most important, is that she is a woman that we are, we are adding to the Planning Committee, um, an African-American woman, um, she's very committed to the city and is very interested in helping move the city forward, um, when it pertains to planning, and I think it's a great, um, addition to, um, the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Young, any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next item is the appointment of Mr. Mark Jackson to the Historical Commission, do I have a motion?
Mr. Keegan? Thank you.
Mr. Keegan?
Mr. Jackson is a lifelong.
Mr. Jackson is a lifelong Norwalk resident and a social studies teacher at Rotten Middle School. He has a deep and sincere appreciation of our city's local history, and that's evident by the many projects he's enjoyed with his students. Of which he's helped his students write a historical document on Heritage Wall for the city of Norwalk. He's coordinated field trips to Lockwood Matthews Mansion and other historical sites. And he's worked with the Historical Society to create a haunted history tour of the city of Norwalk. I think I'd like that. And I, I think we'll all agree that Mr. Jackson's a perfect fit for the Norwalk Historical Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Now we move down to reappointments and the first uh, three, I will move as a group or I will uh, uh, take a motion for all three uh, for the Arts Commission. Nora A. Gruden, Brian Casper, and Janet Evelyn. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, I would like to move all three of these. Um, I actually am a part of the Arts Commission. Um, each um, person on the Commission um, contributes well over an astonishment of of work. And um, for Janet um, herself, she runs the Knights Festival, um, which is a big event within the Norwalk, Connecticut that everybody does know and the majority of the city does um, show up to. Um, as far as Nori herself, she um, has been a member since 2017, but not only 2017, she's also created the Facebook and Instagram pages. And within a time like COVID-19 where everything is now digital, um, our work as far as within the Arts Commission shows for itself via via the actual internet as we move forward with um, things. And as far as Brian as well, his, his wonderful work um, with the Commission never goes unnoticed. He's very versatile and he's very, very on, on top of things. Um, the Commission itself does wonderful work and these three uh, individuals, I believe, are wonderful candidates to be reappointed back to the Arts Commission and I look forward to working with them.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. I'll move, I'll take a motion on the next two together uh, for the Bike Walk Task Bike Walk Commission, Mr. Judson R. Aley and Colin J. Grotheer. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to move Mr. Aley and Mr. Grotheer to for reappointment to Bike Walk Commission. Uh, both are very involved in the community. Uh, Judd currently serves as a member of the Norwalk Parking Authority, involved in many community organizations. He's a local contractor who specializes in green construction and historic preservation. Colin is a Senior Architectural Associate at Finefield Architects with experience in planning and design. He was formerly a manager of Pedal and Pump Bicycles and Fitness, so he knows bicycles. And as members of the Bike Walk Commission, both Judd and Colin have worked to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety and improve the quality of life for all residents. And I believe they very much deserve reappointment to the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. And the last two appointments, uh, reappointments, I'm sorry. Ms. Fran Demeglio and Mary Penniston to the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, John Kitey's here. Um, yes, um, I haven't had the pleasure of spending a lot of time on Ms. Penniston, but I've, I've read her resume and I know her work not only on the Planning Commission, but also on the uh, with her work with children here in Norwalk. And uh, for Ms. Demeglio, I've spent a considerable amount of time with her as Chair of the Planning Commission and me as Chair of the Planning Committee on the Council. We've, we've interacted many times over the years from, you know, things involving the P O C D, plans, budgets and so forth. I've always had a great relationship with her. She's always been a pleasure to work with and I'm very pleased to see that she's uh, up for reappointment tonight and I fully support both these nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Kitey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank all the uh, new appointments and reappointments uh, for their willingness to serve the city in a variety of capacities. Uh, and certainly, um, we're always looking for people who are interested in serving the city. So if anybody has any information regarding uh, appointments or uh, to boards or commissions, uh, we're always looking for new names. So that brings us to the Mayor's uh, comments. Uh, I have a few. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to welcome uh, to Norwalk, Dr. Alexandra Estrella, who is the new Superintendent of Schools. I've had the pleasure of meeting her, meeting with her, uh, and also having numerous telephone conversations relative to the situation uh, in the Norwalk Public Schools, dealing with uh, summer school, dealing with the possibility of opening in September, uh, dealing with a lot of different things, um, the budget and other areas that um, we share a common interest in to make sure that we have um, a, a really, really uh, good relationship. Uh, she has committed to working well with the city, working well with the Common Council, working well with the Board of Investment and Taxation to make sure that uh, as we move forward, uh, we do so in a transparent and open uh, communications, uh, with, with open communications and making sure that um, we uh, work hard to give our children a world-class education in the city of Norwalk. So I want to welcome her. Um, I really uh, think that she's going to uh, be a pleasure with whom to work and I, I do look forward to that relationship. Uh, I'm sure that uh, each and every one of you will have an opportunity uh, to meet with her. I've met with her um, with uh, several of my staff members and uh, I, I encourage uh, all of you to do the same. Uh, next item, um, I, I want to say that I know that on the agenda tonight is Wall Street Place and one of the items that really uh, people were concerned about uh, with the loss of the Garden Cinema, although we knew that the Garden Cinema was going to be sold regardless of Wall Street Place or what was going to happen. Uh, but I have been working with my car, uh, my Corporation Council, uh, reaching out to the Wall Street Theater, Mr. uh, Farrakhan. Um, and we are looking to uh, bring in some independent films to the Wall Street Theater. They have the uh, equipment. And Mr. Coppola has put us in touch with a man who distributes independent films. Uh, and we feel that we're going to hopefully do a pilot program uh, at the end of August where we partner with some of the restaurants in the area and have them provide, uh, if you have a movie ticket, uh, which we're uh, in, in discussion now with Mr. Farrakhan because um, in um, uh, by the time we get ready to do this, he'll be limited to a hundred people, uh, with social distancing. And we're hoping that we can get those hundred people, the first hundred people uh, to go to the theater and they would get um, free admission uh, and for that one night. And if they have a uh, a, a movie ticket that they've uh, ordered online, that some of the partnering restaurants could give them uh, free appetizers or a discount on their meal. So we're working to make sure that we bring back in some way, shape or form uh, independent filming into the Wall Street area. I think that would be a home run for everybody. Mr. Farrakhan was uh, very, very uh, excited about it and I think that uh, we can work out uh, the arrangements. The other thing is, uh, a little bit of exciting news, uh, if it's more exciting than a theater, but I know there's been some uh, serious questions about graduation ceremonies uh, for our high schools. Uh, the COVID-19 uh, coronavirus has robbed our senior class, the 2020 senior class, of their full uh, senior class experience. And it's a very, very sad thing and we've all been going through some very difficult and frustrating times. And I want to congratulate Norwalk and our citizens and our young people for uh, for, for uh, navigating through this um, with uh, the utmost of of uh, they did, they're, we're just doing a great job here in the city of Norwalk. Uh, and they, they're doing so. Uh, and we are now looking at uh, graduation ceremonies. Uh, Senator Duff and I have had a conversation today. I know Dr. Estrella is now reviewing some uh, thoughts about how we can do this and we're confident that we will be able to provide uh, with our, for our two uh, senior classes uh, a graduation experience that uh, of which they can be proud, but also it'll be unique and they will have a story, a, a story for the rest of their lives. So uh, stay tuned. Uh, we're hoping that we can uh, make an announcement very, very soon. But I want to thank Senator Duff and the uh, School Governance Council at Norwalk High School and Mr. Roberts. And also uh, Mr. Hurle, Hurwitz at Brian McMahon and their School Governance Council. I think they're kind of dovetailing. So uh, thank you for, for that. On June 20, I'm sorry, July 27th, we will be opening a second window at uh, City Hall. Uh, we know that people have been uh, very patient uh, with uh, City Hall, the City Hall offices, every department is being staffed and the essential work is being done. And we are now going to open a second window to make sure that uh, people can get serviced more quickly. There'll also be a Dropbox. I'm sorry, uh, there'll also be a Dropbox where people can drop off documents for various departments and we can make sure that people can get the service um, that, that they feel they, the, that they're entitled to. Uh, it's been a challenge. It's been very, very difficult. Uh, but that leads me into my next comment. If you heard today, uh, the chief epidemiologist, uh, Dr. Matthew Carter for the state of Connecticut has indicated that he is very, very uh, certain that there will be some sort of a resurgence and we're very concerned about that. There are 44 states around the country that have seen significant increases in the coronavirus cases over the last couple of weeks. Uh, today, Florida set another record and it's because people are opening too quickly. People are not paying attention to the medical experts who study the trends that viruses take, their very common trends. And they have uh, empirical data that show exactly what we can expect. And a lot of the states that are opening too quickly are now seeing a resurgence. And I'm cautioning people, I, I'm so proud of the, of the people of Norwalk because wherever I go, I see people wearing face coverings. I see people wearing the masks that are provided, surgical masks. I see people doing their best to practice social distancing. There was also a statement today that if everybody practiced physical distancing and wore a mask for the next six to eight weeks, that we could overcome this virus. We put a lot of time and energy into it. We put a lot of hard work into it. So I'm just saying, let's keep it up. Let's not take our foot off the gas pedal right now. We're not out of the woods yet, but we're doing far better than most people because we in the city of Norwalk and the state of Connecticut have been slow to reduce some of the restrictions. So that is all I have and uh, turn it over to the Council President, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too would just like to take a moment to welcome Dr. Estrella officially to Norwalk. I have had the opportunity to have a few conversations with her and look forward to a collaborative uh, relationship with uh, with Dr. Estrella, the Board of Ed and um, the city. So welcome. We have an epically long agenda tonight for which Ms. Young is prepared to read for us. Uh, because of the length of it, though, we have many important items to uh, to tackle tonight, but uh, because of the length of, length of it, we have a couple little glitches that we need to take care of, which Ms. Young will do as we, as we move along. So Ms. Young? Thank you. All right, so the consent calendar. 7A Health and Public Safety Committee, 7A1, authorize the Mayor Harry W. willing to execute an agreement with, on behalf of the Fire Department to C-GRAVE, F, C-GRAVE Fire Apparatus LLC for the purchase of a hundred-foot ladder truck not to exceed $1,350,000, account number noted. 7A2A, authorize the Mayor Harry W. willing to execute an agreement with Motorola Solutions Inc. for the supply, installation and service of radio system dispatch console equipment for the police and fire radio system, pricing as per state of Connecticut, master contract number A99-001 and A967A230338C for an amount not to exceed $895,184 from account numbers noted. 2, 7A2B, authorize Chief Thomas Kohalik to execute change orders to the above agreement for the amount not to exceed $32,743, account numbers noted. 7B Planning Committee, 7B1, approve the amended PY45 Annual Action Plan and Citizen Participation Plan for the inclusion of CDBG-CV funds and authorize the Mayor to execute any and all documents associated with the amended PY45 AAP to HUD and all documents consistent with the amended PY45 AAP. 7B2, authorize the Mayor to submit waiver requests related to the CARES Act slash CDBG-CV program to HUD on the behalf of the affected persons as identified by the CDBG-CV Public Disclosure Form. So, the following items, 7C5, from Public Works Committee, 7C8A and 8B under Public Works were put on the addenda and are thus removed. 7C2, authorize the Mayor Harry W. willing to execute a second amendment to the Woodward-Koran Agreement dated August 12, 2019 to provide on-call professional engineering services for the storm drainage system evaluation in accordance with scope of services, task order 1E, Dreamy Hollow Drainage System Improvement, dated July 1, 2020, for a sum not to exceed $578,886, account numbers noted. 7C3A, technical correction of the Common Council Action of March 12, 2019, item 7C4, to add accounts designated for the repaving of the Firehouse Apparatus Maintenance Building Parking Lot located at 100 Fairfield Avenue, account number noted. 7C3B, authorize the Mayor Harry W. willing to execute an agreement with Gearing Construction for the project, PM 2019, one payment management program for a sum not to exceed $4,538,688.50, count numbers noted. 7C3C, authorize the Chief of Operations and Public Works to execute orders on the contract with Gearing Construction. Can you hear me? Yes, I'm sorry, I'll say that again. 3C, authorize the Chief of Operations and Public Works to execute orders on the contract with Gearing Construction Inc. for project PM 2019, one payment management program for a sum not to exceed $458,000, $53,800, so again, $453,868.85, count numbers noted. 7C4A, technical correction of the Common Council Action of December 10, 2019, item 7A1, to add accounts designated for LED streetlight conversion design, account numbers noted. 7C4B, authorize the Mayor Harry W. willing to execute an agreement between the city of, city of Norwalk and Southport Associates PC for professional engineering services for the design of the historic streetlight system on Wall Street for a sum not to exceed $16,800, count numbers noted. 7C. A. I think that's it. 7C9. Authorize the Mayor Harry W. willing to concur with project authorization letter for state project 01020350, Norwalk River Valley Trail Phase 2, and to provide a demand deposit of $40,062 to the state of Connecticut, account number noted. 7C10. Seven C 10 authorized a purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to CN Wood of Connecticut LLC for the purchase of one Vector 2100 plus vacuum truck not to exceed $537,342.80, count numbers noted. Seven, did I go that fast? Seven D.
Ms. Young, I, I just need to interrupt. You missed item number six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Seven C six authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to execute a right of access and entry agreement with Yankee Gas Services Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to use the property located at 102, 102 New Canaan Avenue for the flare location as part of the activation of a 12 foot steel gas main located at Route 123. Okay. Seven D Recreation and Parks Cultural Committee. Seventy one authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to execute addendum number one with Land Tech Consultants Inc. for the design services for project number 3860 West Rock School Athletic Field Design Services dated January 20, 2019 for a sum not to exceed $32,300 for surveying and construction administration services, account numbers noted. Seven D three authorized a purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to CN Wood of Connecticut LLC for the purchase of one trackless MT-7 articulating tractor and V plow attachment not to exceed $130,955, count numbers noted. Seven D four authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to enter into an agreement with M.E. O'Brien and Sons Soul Source State Contract Number 17PSX0081 for the purchase and installation of play equipment and engineered fiber safety surfacing at Tracy Elementary School for a sum not to exceed $119,198, count number noted. Seven D five authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to enter an agreement with M.E. O'Brien and Sons Soul Source State Contract Number 17PSX0081 for the purchase and installation of play equipment at Silver Mine Elementary School for a sum not to exceed $147,983, count numbers noted. Seven D six authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to execute addendum number one with FGB Construction Company for project DPWRNP 2020 dash one Nathan Hale Middle School Bathroom Concession Building Site Work for a sum not to exceed $67,570, count numbers noted. Men use, seven E Land Use and Building Management Committee. Seven E one authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to enter into a contract with the Norwalk Board of Education and Durham Student Services LP to sublease 334 Wilson Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut for a term, for a term conterminous with the agreement for type and type for type one and type two student transportation services I in between the Norwalk Board of Education and Durham School Services LP dated May 18th, 2020, which absent extension ends on June 30th, 2025. Seven E two A authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to execute an agreement with Stewart Mechanical Services Inc. for the Rotten Middle School Portable Air Conditioning and Electrical Upgrade Phase Two Project for a total not to exceed $394,000. Funds are available and the accounts noted. Seven E two B authorized the North Public Schools Facilities Department to issue change orders on this contract for a total of $39,400, count numbers noted. Seven E three A authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to execute an agreement with Salomon and Associates PC for the Norwalk Public Schools Oil Tank Replacement Project for a total not to exceed $106,670, count number noted. Seven E three. That'd be B not C. Three B authorized the North Public Schools Facilities Department to issue change order on this contract for a total of $10,700, count number noted. Seven E four A authorized a purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Precision Placement LLC for the moving services for the Jefferson Elementary School renovation and improvement project for a total not to exceed $55,230, count number noted. Seven E four B authorized a contingency allowance for a total not to exceed $5,500. Seven E five authorized the Office of Building Management to increase the purchase order with William B. Meyer Inc. for moving services for the Pony School Edition and Alterations Project for a total not to exceed $20,000, count number noted. Seven E six authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to execute an amendment with the ONG Industries slash AP Construction TMA, a joint venture agreement for the North Maritime Aquarium Functional Replacement Project to provide additional staff support for a total not to exceed $100,000 and to extend the completion date for the Ford D Theater to January 15th, 2021 and the SEAL Tank to March 19th, 2021. Funds are available from the Maritime Aquarium State Functional Replacement Account as noted. Seven F Finance and Claims Committee. Seven F one accept and approve the report of the Claims Committee dated July 9th, 2020. Seven F two for additional purposes only narrative on the tax collections dated July 9th, 2020. Seven F three for informational purposes only monthly tax collector's report dated June 20th, 20. Seven F four authorized the mayor Harry W. willing to execute a contract for management and administration of the city's workers compensation and heart and hypertension program for the three-year period beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2023 at a cost per claim based on the following schedule. Report only claims $27 per claim cost, medical only claims 215 per claim cost, indemnity claims $1,175 per claim cost and heart and hypertension claims at $1,175 per claim cost. The total estimate annual cost is $104,747 and the total three-year cost is $314,241, count number noted. I think I skipped something, didn't I?
I think you got it. The only thing that I had seen was that item six, which you covered. Well done, Ms. Young. That was, that was. Yes, you're done. Have a sip of water and thank you. Um, and I will now call for a vote on the consent calendar as read. I'd like to take a roll call vote, please. Um, Mr. Burnett?
Hi.
Ms. Johnson? Mr. Langella?
Hi.
Mr. Sachinelli?
Hi.
Mr. Hoovman?
Hi.
Mr. Roberts?
Hi.
Mr. Dumas? Mr. Dumas? Is he still with us? Ms. Young?
Hi.
Mr. Kides?
Yes.
Mr. Theodridis?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Serenides?
Hi.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Consent calendar passes unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, and congratulations, Ms. Young. You were impeccable.
Thank you. I didn't know I was backing myself out.
Really, really well done.
Thank you.
Now, uh, I'm probably gonna miss a couple of things myself because I tried to keep up with what was off consent, which I believe the first item, uh, would be seven C one, and that goes to Mr. Serenides. Am I right?
No, it'd be the planning item, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry?
The planning item would be first.
Which one is that?
B three.
Yes, B three.
Oh, seven C three.
B three.
Yes, envoy.
B three. Okay, Mr. Kides.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item B three approve the amended land disposition and development agreement by and between the city of Norwalk Redevelopment Agency of the city of Norwalk and Poco IWSR Developers LLC dated November 14th, 2007 as amended and the proposed amendment to the loan recognition agreement by and between Poco IWSR Developers LLC, the city of Norwalk, the redevelopment agency of the city of Norwalk, Citibank dated November 14th, 2007 as amended and authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents associated with the amended LDA and LRA as necessary to allow the proposed development by municipal holdings LLC to complete, complete phase one construction of the Wall Street project. I thought it best, uh, before discussion, uh, with us tonight, we have representatives from Citibank, the preferred developer by Citibank and their legal representation, Mr. Hennessy. They, uh, had asked to, uh, present to the council what we saw at the planning committee level. And I thought it'd be a good idea for those couple of members of the, of the council that didn't have the opportunity to attend that planning committee meeting. So, um, I believe Mr. Hennessy wanted to start it off.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. Kides. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Smith, and, uh, my hat's off to Councilwoman.
You're gonna have to speak louder, please, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kides, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Ms. Smith, and, uh, kudos to Ms. Young. I, I wish we were on the consent agenda as well. My name is William Hennessy. I'm a lawyer with Carmody, Torrance, Sandak and Hennessy. And, uh, together with my partner who's also here, Debra Brancato, uh, we represent JHM Financial Group, who, uh, is, uh, the principals of which are John McClucci and Todd McClucci, both of which have, uh, joined us tonight. They, along with the owner of the property, uh, that we'll be talking about tonight, 61 Wall Street, which is an affiliate of Citibank, uh, are proposing to be, as you know, the successor redeveloper for the, uh, the so-called Poco project at, uh, 61, uh, Wall Street. We're here to explain the LDA, to explain the development plan, which is far more interesting frankly than the LDA. And of course, to answer any questions you have. We, uh, gave a very detailed, I thought, presentation to the, uh, planning committee on July 2nd. We're happy and proud to have received a unanimous recommendation of approval. We've been asked to give you a truncated abbreviated version of that, uh, presentation. We are prepared to give you as much or as little information as you want. So we'll count upon you to, uh, interrupt any of us at any point to modulate, uh, the presentation. But just as a snippet of background. Problem with the lights in my office, so I will, uh, turn around periodically. The, uh, the, the project, uh, was conceptualized, uh, about 16 years ago. And between 2004 and 2015, really, nothing happened. It took 11 years for the first, uh, spade of dirt to really turn over, uh, on this project. But in 2015, phase one, uh, the partially built building was, uh, put under construction. It was in the spring of 2015. And as you well know, it had a very innovative, modern, untested, you could say, parking garage, an automated parking garage that was the, the lynchpin of the project, which was 101 units. And do you know exactly where it is? You've been living with it all these years. After a bit more than a year of construction and about 14 months, construction was stopped. Uh, and it never started again. It took, uh, Citibank from, you know, the summer of 2016 to roughly the summer of 2017 to gain control of the property, but they did. So in 2017, about three years ago, for the month, Citibank controlled the property and they knew that they had a problem on their hands. They had a very unusual building with a highly unusual, uh, parking system. It was phase one and three different phases. They didn't own title to the other phases. They were financed through different groups and, uh, they knew it was frankly a big problem, a mess, you could call it, in the real estate world. And they turned to experienced folks that they had great experience with. And those are my clients, JHM Financial, who work it out. They knew JHM was mission driven like they are. This is not, uh, the commercial, typical commercial lending arm of Citibank we're dealing with. This is community capital group. Uh, they care about what happens in communities and they are, uh, dedicated to the, as they will tell you, the fabric of these communities. They knew the JHM was the same sort of mission driven, uh, group who could produce housing that was affordable to working folks and maybe even, uh, you know, folks that weren't quite so lucky and weren't working. But they could produce high-quality housing in the right spot. They could execute it. They could finance it. They could actually build it and get it occupied in less time and with less risk than any other, uh, entity out there in the market. So they turned to JHM and JHM immediately began looking at the building. They did all the typical things that you would do with a building that's been sitting there empty and exposed. Uh, you know, they looked at the systems. They looked at the, you know, the quality of the construction. They looked at, you know, the condition of it. They also studied hard, the parking, this innovative parking system. And they quickly concluded, as had Citibank, that it was dysfunctional. It was not gonna work. It never would have worked and they had to find a parking solution. Now, they knew that the parking couldn't be in the building, so they began looking inside the building. And frankly, they looked at the phase two area, uh, on Isaac Street. And they tried to design a system that could accommodate parking, uh, enough parking for both the phase two building and the phase one building. And they had gotten fairly far down the road until the spring of 2018, when to everybody's surprise frankly, a third party bought that property. So that property was off the table and there was nothing, uh, that could be done about it. So they had to look for a different solution. Now shortly after that, after the third party had bought that, Citibank had to turn in its low-income housing tax credit because the building wouldn't be complete in time to honor the obligations that came with those credit. So by December of 2018, the original developer had gone bust, was out of business. And frankly, the principal, as you know, had passed away. The parking had been adjudged to be completely useless, although millions of dollars were put into it. The substitute parking area, a logical one, had disappeared and all the equity to finance the project had also disappeared. That was about 18 months ago. The client got to work right away and said, well, there must be another solution for the parking and they found it. They ventured into an agreement with the owners of the Garden Cinema, as you know, and proposed to put it there. They did their financing work, their budgetary work. They put together a budget that is executable, that can work. And they've gotten Citibank to commit to that. And you know, in the package that went out, Citibank is, is, is very supportive of this and, uh, is anxious to go commit on the, uh, construction financing. And they, uh, solved, uh, they designed the parking garage and they proposed it to you in June of 2019. And on July 2nd, 2019, exactly one year to the day that we were before the council of the planning committee this year, we presented to the common councils, planning committee, the proposal. And we walked away from that after a very robust and detailed, uh, hearing, public hearing, uh, with, with, with three main comments. You could call them criticisms. We were essentially sent back home to do some homework. Folks said, we're worried that 100% of all your units are at some level affordable, the below market rate. Yet can you, can you do something that, with that? Or can you explain it better? Can you explain better to us the banding of affordability? Cause it's complicated. And can you somehow equate that to actual jobs out there in the marketplace? Who's gonna live in these units? I mean, what, what kinds of people? How diverse is this gonna be? We want it to be diverse. We want it to be diverse in all respects, including income diverse. But we want to understand it better. So we were sent to do that. We were sent to rethink, number two, we were sent to rethink the art component. We were criticized for not having enough of a commitment to the arts-centric portion of the Wall Street. of the Wall Street urban renewal plan. And number three, and as importantly, we were criticized for the architecture, the exterior architecture on the sixty-one Wall Street building. We were asked to go rethink that and make it more sympathetic to the existing street front and vernacular on Wall Street Place. So we did that. We did all three of those things, and we resubmitted a proposal in late June of this year, late May of this year. And frankly, we probably would have been able to be here a bit sooner, were it not for everything that going on in the world, but it took that long. We think we've got it right. And that's why when I said to you, we were proud of what we were able to accomplish at the Planning Committee. That's the rationale behind that. We feel like we, we got less than an A plus the first time and got pretty close there the second time. So let me, before I turn it over to Todd McClucci, to walk you through both the, the, the income banding portion of this and the architecture portion of this, let me talk just a bit about the art component. Now, in addition to, you know, street, uh, street level and materials that'll be fixed to the building to support an art-centric district. This building, you should understand, and when you see the, the building plans, note the level of retail at the ground level and the positioning of that retail. It is sprinkled throughout. The storefronts are sprinkled throughout ground level, and they're interspiced with two main lobbies of the building. In addition to that, we have discussed and proposed, frankly, making one of the retail boxes, the one called Box E, which is on the corner of Isaac and Isaac. So it's very prominent. Available to the Norwalk Out Commission for the rent of a dollar a year for a period of five years. And their only cost would be for utilities and, you know, common area maintenance, those sorts of things. And at that point, we, we want to take a step back and let people better than us at curating artistic space run. We want to keep our hands off of it, because we, we don't want to, we, we don't want our shadow to be on it. And frankly, we're not in the arts business, but we see it as either studio space, maybe some kind of performing space. And just talking to Jessica Casey, she had ideas that frankly we hadn't thought of. Maker space and things of that nature, for which there is apparently a high demand for in this district that would help launch artistic people that, that need a foothold in business to get to the next level. We're excited about all those, and we would support any of them, and we're excited about all of them. So that's what would go in the space that we are talking about on the ground floor. And with that, maybe I should stop talking for a second and turn it over to Todd. Let me just say that the proposal here would be to build the, to, to complete the building at sixty-one Wall Street and, and to also simultaneously build the second building on the Garden Cinema site, seventeen Isaac Street at all. And that would be a two and a half story parking garage, which would contain most, but not all of the parking for the main building across the street at sixty-one Wall. And it would also have atop that parking garage fifty units, which at this moment look to be market rate units. So we would have the fifty units in that building, plus the hundred and one units in the sixty-one Wall Street building, and that would be served by parking, that is, at the seventeen Isaac Street site, as well as forty upgrade spaces, which would be accommodated at sixty-one Wall Street. So Todd, do you have the control of the screen? Can you manipulate it now to put the image of the building up?
He should be able to clear his screen.
All right, is that coming up?
Yeah, yes, in my screen it is. There we go. So Todd, do you want to walk folks through this, or would you like me, or how, what's the best way to?
Yeah, I, I can start off and, and then you can fill in some of, some of the gaps, and we can go from there. So as, as Bill mentioned, last year, we, we did go back to the drawing board. We, we met with several representatives in, in Norwalk, mainly Todd Bryant, Bruce Feinfield, to talk about some of the architectural design and how we could better, we could change the character of the building to, to better assimilate and fit in with the overall context of the Wall Street neighborhood, and also make sure that we are addressing what we felt as a, as one of the big concerns, and one of the big concerns that we heard from many folks, is making sure that we can bring activity and activating the streets. So how do we, how do we bring both our, our residents who live within this building and also our retail tenants? And how do we incorporate them into this, this neighborhood and in the Wall Street area? And, and this is the design that we, we came up with as part of those discussions. It incorporates a lot of more brick and stone on the Wall Street facade, which better assimilates itself to some of the neighboring buildings. And at the ground floor, we did, you know, as much glass partitions as possible in making sure that the, the storefront space is, is inviting and welcoming as possible as people are walking through the neighborhood. The next thing I can, I can just sort of walk through the overall plan. I can do it fairly quickly here, and we can go back if people have further questions and want to dive into certain aspects of the design or, or what, what, or different components of the building itself. So as, as Bill mentioned, there obviously it's, it's, this is made up, this proposal is made up of two properties, one being located at sixty-one Wall Street, being the, the north property identified here. And then the, the other property, which is seventeen Isaacs, which is labeled Wall Street Place East on the, on the lower right hand corner of that page. And what this proposal is, it's, it's a, it's two separate buildings. One incorporates a hundred and one units of residential, and the other is fifty residential. And the Wall Street Place North will also have approximately about ten thousand square feet of retail space. And Bill touched a little bit upon it earlier, was that out of the ten thousand square feet, a, a portion of that is going to be designated for the arts and cultural, some sort of incubator space, and we want to work with the city and the Arts Commission on making sure that that, that space is programmed and can in fact grow. As I mentioned during the planning meeting the other week, is we actually find the, the arts component to this and in, in light of the neighborhood is a strong selling point for this. And we really want to make sure, and we want to, we're, we plan on marketing the building in such a light. So here's the existing condition of, of the, the two properties today. Here is the building on Wall Street North. This is the, the current footprint that everybody sees. This is the basement floor, which can be potentially used for amenity space and/or the expansion of any retail or arts component that, that we find as, has a has a need to, to grow and expand. Here's the, the ground floor, first floor of Wall Street Place. Again, we, we made sure that, that we activated the street as much as possible by incorporating retail and, and public lobbies on, on the, on the edge of the property. And then we also have, and we furthered that along as we move down Isaac Street and over to what is the, the main entrance for the building. And in addition to, to having that, you will also be able to access forty ungrade spaces that will be utilized by both retail and residential customers. Here is the, the second story of the building. This is all residential, and most of these stories will all look fairly similar. The, the blue represents the residential units, which is a, a combination or a mixture of one, two, and three bedrooms. And then the green space identifies both outdoor recreational space for the residents as well as community rooms and fitness. Community room being located at the, the furthest northern point, point of the property and fitness on the southwest corner. So again, like I said, this, the, the residential stacking plans mirrors basically what you just saw on the second floor, and this will continue on the third, fourth, and fifth story and sixth story at the back of the property. So the front of the property is, is five stories, and the back along Isaac Street will be, will also have a sixth story. So we were looking at some of the elevations a little bit earlier, just to give you a little view of, of the property as it relates to some of the other properties on, on Wall Street. This is the view from Isaac Street. Here's a stacking plan of the different uses for the property. And again, back to, to the rendering and some of the changes that were made to, 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 for the architectural design as, as well as making sure people had both outdoor space as well as the street activation. And then moving on to seventeen Isaac. As Bill mentioned before, there's, this is gonna be, consist of fifty residential units as, on, on top of a two and a half story parking garage. This two and a half story parking garage is gonna have about a hundred and fifty spaces, parking spaces in it. We contemplate that some of those will be available for, for public use, and the balance will be used for the residential and, and retail customers of each. So once we move past the two and a half stories of the parking structure, you're gonna have two stories of, of the residential. This will include the fifty, fifty residential units. And then we're also contemplating a, a small recreational space, rooftop space for residents to be able to gather and integrate outside. And I, I should have mentioned it a little bit earlier, but the recreational space, we do have it spread out between both buildings. Each building meets its recreational requirements. However, we want to make sure that we program that space, so the residents or so it promotes interaction in the neighborhood. We want people to be walking around. We want the streets to be activated. And the way to do that is by providing different spaces and, and programming different aspects of this in either building. So residents can meet and integrate with one another, and they can also utilize these different spaces while also being more active in the community. Here is the elevation of the building on seventeen Isaac. It will have a, the parking garage, as we, as we noted on the first two stories, and then two stories of residential above. And, and I guess what you, you see here, about three quarters or one third of this building will actually be blocked or from the view as you drive down Isaac Street, there is a row of homes and businesses along, along the eastern portion of the property or of the street that we'll see in a minute. So it will be these businesses right here as you drive down Isaac Street, and you will, this will be your view as you, as you come down and, and enter into the parking garage. This would actually be the parking garage. And right here, what we're utilizing this for is because of some of the, the retail space is not ideally located on, on Wall Street where it's gonna have some more traffic, we, we are promoting those businesses by highlighting and activating the garage. That is, I mean, the first thing that you see as you're driving down Isaac, and will be able to direct people's attention and, and excitement to where they can potentially visit some of those other businesses. And so that wraps up the, that wraps up the review of the, of the building and the programming for it. And is there a couple other aspects we want to run through?
Maybe we could go back to the first floor floor plate and show the, the retails, the art commission space. I think it's right there, that plate.
So right here on the first floor, so we have two identified retail spaces, one being this retail E space on the corner of Isaac and Isaac. And again, it's, it's directly across the street from seventeen Isaac, where we should have a good amount of marketability for it. And this is about nine hundred square feet, and you can see that it's actually located next adjacent to a stair. And that stair could potentially be opened up and utilized to the extent that there needs to be or a demand for expansion in the basement space that we looked at previously. So here is some of the unoccupied space within the basement level that can be accessed by not only this stairwell, but there actually is, you know, ADA as well. There's elevator bank over here that accesses it. But it's a, it's a good opportunity. So to the extent that there's a demand, we, we have the ability, like accordion, to, to just expand or contract that space.
Thank you. Do you want to talk a bit about the affordability banding?
Perfect, so. Let me stop. I mean, I see it flip to different screen here, and I will pull that right up in just a second. So is that showing for everybody that the slide should, should show arts and cultural enhancements right now?
Mine does.
It does not?
It does.
Oh, it does. Okay, good. Okay.
There we go.
So unit mix and income limits. So one of the things that was that we, we heard loud and clear the last time we all met was making sure or promoting as much mixed income as possible. And I, I think that we've come up with a mix that really addresses a unmet need for most communities, particularly in, in Lower Fairfield County. And, and so what we have done here is we've developed a, a tiering level that meets various levels that we can, we can quickly walk through. We've, we've done approximately twenty-five percent at, and I'm just gonna use round numbers for right now, at forty percent of, of AMI. We can see how those rents at the forty percent level, how, how they compare to the income qualifications here. So basically, the, the rents are between a thousand dollars and fifteen hundred dollars, and it's for families earning between forty thousand and sixty thousand dollars of the area median income. Sixty percent between sixteen and sixteen hundred dollars and twenty-two hundred dollars. And that would allow for incomes between sixty and almost eighty-six thousand dollars, almost eighty, yeah, eighty-six thousand dollars. The eighty percent is between twenty-one hundred dollars and three thousand dollars, again, for incomes between eighty and one, one fourteen. And then we have a, a number of market rate units. That was one of the, the components that was, was added to all of this at the, at the request and comment to, to many of the, the council members. So we, and I think what is important to, to note from all of this is it's, you know, these, these numbers are these rent levels as well as the incomes, how do they relate to, to different employment opportunities and, and jobs in, in the city of Norwalk? And what we've done from, done is we've taken a look at a number of different professions and looked up what the entry and median wages are for each of those. And just to give everybody a, a feel for, for each of those, secretary typically earns around thirty-five thousand dollars entry level, median forty-three, which would then be able to qualify for a forty percent. Patrol officer between fifty-eight entry and sixty-six median, which would qualify them for a sixty percent. Teacher about the same in, in terms of being able to qualify for sixty percent, and that is earning between forty-three and seventy-one thousand dollars. And that is uh earning between forty-three and seventy-one thousand dollars. And lastly, uh, a nurse and um between thirty-six and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Being able to qualify for either a forty or sixty percent. So we see a great demand or a need for this type of housing. Um, we think that we have uh tried to create a mixture um as broad as possible. That is not being met by by other developments, um, particularly with with the quality and amenities that this project will deliver. Um, again, there's a tremendous amount of programming space within the property, the retail and and its its location. Um, we s- we really haven't touched upon that too much, but this is a, this is the heart of Norwalk. Um, it was, you know, once a sort of thriving uh center of the city. And we had the opportunity to to bring that back with this development. Uh, it will be an impetus to for to help bring that back. Um, this will bring a hundred and fifty families to the area as well as. Uh, other retail, brand new state, you know, in the state of the art building and then b- bring uh other retail customers. So if we want to open it up to to any any comments or questions, we're we're happy to do that. And Bill, I don't know if you have anything else to to finish up with.
No, Mr. Kides, I mean, uh, I I think we've hit the high points. Uh, it it it, this is. Feels like a good time for a question and answer. We're happy to proceed along that line.
Uh, Mr. Kides, did you wish to uh make some comments?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, please.
Uh, please, go ahead.
Are you in, thank you, gentlemen, for that um very detailed presentation and. And you 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 kind of touched on it before in the year and a half since this this item was brought to the council for approval. Um, where at that meeting we imposed uh almost a wish list of. Conditions that the council wanted to see before we would uh. We would consider the approval and I I can say from being involved since then to now, that I know there's a few other members of this council that. Also um um were involved in that and I want to say you you've you've not only. Uh, successfully achieved all those conditions that we we put upon you, but you've surpassed with other concessions. So thank you and 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 thank you to everyone involved in the dialogue and the negotiations from mayor's office. To redevelopment and the planning committee and everyone, and especially, you know, of course, to you gentlemen um. Uh, and uh everyone from Citibank. I know it was, it's been a long road. And um just quickly, I I and I know that. It's unfortunate the theater is no longer there and I know that's a loss to our city. Uh, I'm happy to see that, you know, with the mayor making the announcements earlier today about the part, the participation involvement with the Wall Street Theater and. And what they're going to be bringing i- is in our component down to the area and. And also your concession, Mr. Hennessy and Mr. and some McClutchie's for allocating that space to the Arts Commission. That's, that's, that's definitely a a step in the right direction. And my point for saying that is. Where the parking lot will be now, I think is is a better location than it was previously planned. I think Norwalk has a lot of problems with our parking being not very visible from the major roadways. And 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 that's a complaint I hear often, you know, either being South Norwalk, Wall Street. And wherever in our urban core. So I'm, I think, you know, having this visible from Wall Street ultimately um. Will benefit uh the city and allowing folks to see it when they want to park and go to the area and visit our businesses and so forth. So. Thank you for that. And overall, I know this has been a long road to get to this point. I'm I'm glad to be here now. I think we have a solid project to have, you know, in front of us and um. And I asked all my other fellow council members to please support this project and uh not just because of. Frustration of being through this for eight years, I really truly think we have a solid project here that deserves to move forward. So back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kides. I think in order to uh make this go as smoothly as possible. Um, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, if you could re, please raise your hand on the part, on a panelist's uh. Bar, if you go down to the participants down below and you see your name and you can raise your hand. Uh, this way we can go through the questions as orderly as we possibly can. And Mr. Manzi, you might have to help me with that. So for that, with that, I'll open up the question, the Florida questions.
Uh, Darlene Young.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. Um, so just so that I'm clear, how many one bedrooms and. Two bedrooms and then three bedrooms apartment than the whole project?
Yes, sorry. Thank you for bring bringing that up. Um, so a total of one hundred and fifty-one units. Residential units, there would be twenty-seven one bedrooms, a hundred and eight two bedrooms and sixteen three bedrooms.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's in both buildings. That's a combined number.
Buying in both.
One project.
And the affordable units will be dispersed throughout, right? There's not all in one, I don't think, right?
The the affordable units are in sixty-one uh Wall Street right now because of the financing that can't be mixed. We are talking to Mr. Kleppen about intermingling them. That is a zoning issue that we are involved with him.
I I I, yeah. I think that's a concern and an issue. I I I don't think that separating people out based on their income. I mean, if that's something that can be looked into.
We we agree with you completely. That our goal is to intermingle them.
Thank you.
Mr. Manzi, does anybody else have their hand raised?
Yes, Mr. Livingston.
Mr. Livingston?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. As has been pointed out, and this project's been in the works for a long time. It's not a perfect project. The times and things have changed since the LDA was first approved back in two thousand and seven. And now I'll be the first to admit I've had a number of issues with this project, including design, legal documentation, the nature of the project itself. But I'm going to support it. Um, I'm going to support it because a lot's changed over the last year. And the proposal before us really addresses my biggest concerns and among other things, as noted by Mr. Hennessy. You know, thanks largely to the efforts of Todd Bryant and Bruce Beinfield. It's now a much better design. Um, this is an historic district and I think the new design really took goes a long way to reflecting that. Also, the nature of the project has changed in response to community and council uh input. To now include the fifty market rate units we discussed, providing a good mix of needed housing options in the area. And also, I I I also support obviously the additional legal protections in the city that have been added to the docks which are being asked to approve tonight. But I also wanted to comment on some of the concerns that have been raised about the tax incentives being provided for developers. I know people have raised that. And, I mean, the incentives for the affordable units are in line with the incentives given to other city projects. But the financial benefits to the city are more than just the tax dollars, as as important as they are. Um, each resident will be bringing disposable income into the area, which will in turn help improve the neighborhood. And if the redevelopment agency's experience as a guide will also provide jobs. And as noted by one of the commentators tonight, the project will serve as a catalyst for a neighbor, the neighborhood. And which raises, which is the last issue, which is we will hopefully now be able to move this project forward, which we need to do. For the residents of Wall Street who have had to deal with this project for so many years, as well as the residents of Norwalk as a whole. And just, just I want to add one last thing that I that I hope. Um, that we'll be able to sit down with Mr. Milligan and be able to work towards a mutually satisfactory resolution of that. Of all outstanding issues, so that this project can move forward in a timely manner. So thank you. I do support it.
Thank you.
Mr. Livingston, does anybody else have their hand raised? Mr. Manzi?
Yes, yes, Councilman uh Hooverman.
Mr. Hu- Mr. Hooverman.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I just, I have a couple of quick questions about parking. Um, the total number of parking spaces between the two buildings is uh what?
One uh, one fifty-seven. One ninety-six, excuse me.
And the breakdown is forty?
One fifty-seven in the Isaac Street, forty in the uh sixty-one Wall Street.
And then how many of those will be public spaces, considering the fact that that in order to have two-way traffic on Isaacs? You have to go to the zoning site plan that's there that shows parallel parking on Isaac, which is a lot less than the angle parking that you had. Uh, originally in your conceptual drawing. So uh how many of the spots in the garage are going to be public?
There's a commitment under the LDA to make uh Deborah's one hundred, if I remember correctly, right? Todd?
That's the commitment under the LDA, but there's also if you're not able to provide that, there's a, there's a penalty on that. So I'm curious.
There's a, there's essentially a buyout. The number of spaces, i- the the LDA was a. Pardon?
A minimum of thirty.
Minimum of thirty physical spaces or if there's less than thirty, there there can't be that option. They need to all be bought out at the twenty-two thousand dollars a space. So it's two point two million. Uh, the city introduced that because I think uh the thinking was the city didn't want to wind up with just the. The a less than meaningful amount of fairly isolated space, two or five or six or twenty-nine. It wanted a minimum of thirty. The parking here, the 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 required zoning parking is driven by the amount of below market rate uh units. So it it's really a mathematical uh exercise in where those units are. Right now, Mr. Kleppen is telling us if any of those below market rate units are in the uh Isaac Street building. The parking for those units can be reduced, thus freeing up space for uh public parking. So what we have to do is see whether the market, because we don't want to build a project that is unattractive to renters because they can't park. We have to understand whether the market can support the number of spaces that would allow us to free up thirty spaces. And right now, Mr. Holm, I I we don't know the answer to that. We just know what our options are. Either we write the check, uh, the city a big check or we write it a less big check and provide thirty spaces.
Okay, well, it it is, it is a concern moving this forward, uh, you know, for for me, for that area. Especially since Isaac Street now is, you know, basically becomes a blind street. You turn a corner and then you're going to have to turn around and come back out in a two-way uh on a two-way street. Um, I I just, I I want to say that I haven't sat with this for eight years. Uh, I've only been with this for a little over seven months. Uh, and so. For me, though, I've lived in this area for that period of time and. The I would like to see this project moving forward. I think it's it's a positive to to. Complete it, to get people moved into that area, to revitalize Wall Street. And and I'm, I'm heartened by when I was a private citizen a year ago when this came out, the the design. Seeing the changes that you've made, that you've ta- taken to heart, a lot of the comments that were made. Uh, makes me feel positive about this moving forward. The the tax credit issues and the other issues are are larger issues, I think, that that go back to when this was. The LDA was originally created and it's something that, you know, we we have to live with. But I believe strongly that we've got to move this forward and I I think this is a very positive step in that direction. I appreciate the work that you guys have done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Manzi, does anybody have their hand raised?
Yes, we have Councilmember Smith.
Um, thank you. Um, I would just like to concur with um Mr. Livingston and Mr. Kides um comments. Uh, this has, uh, this project's really come a long way in the past year. Um, it's been an albatross and an eyesore in the Wall Street uh community. And has dragged down uh not just Wall Street, but the whole city. And and I think it's exciting to think about the revitalization that will happen um as we move this forward. Um, I'd also like to comment on the affordable housing. I have commented on it uh several times already. But I feel very strongly that this affordable housing is very much needed, that working class people deserve uh decent homes. And um and I have had the opportunity to tour two of the McClutchie. Uh, developments in Darien, the Heights and the Royal, and I found good quality um workmanship. And um, one of the things that I really liked about those properties is the uh the commitment. From the developers to create a sense of community for the residents there. So I think that, you know, that again, this project's come a long way and I think that, you know, moving forward, we've got something we can, we can work with.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, Ms. Johnson.
I had a very brief question about um hoping you could address concerns that people might have about. Fire trucks and other emergency services ability to go into Isaac Street. Um, given that certainly would be a necessary uh aspect of the the redevelopment here.
Yeah, why don't you uh a- address that if you can? We have, we we were challenged with that. We have done the turning radiuses that engineers do with templates for, you know, the largest fire trucks in the district that would serve it. And uh it it works. A truck can get in, the truck can turn and it can get out. Uh, and that's really what a fire truck needs to know it can do. Uh, and it can do that and we feel very confident that the uh public health, health, safety and welfare is well protected. Uh, and and that concern need not be a concern anymore.
So the responding stations, trucks, all all sizes would be able to do what you're describing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Burnett?
Mr. Burnett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a brief question and it's related to the uh affordable, number of affordable units. Uh, i- i- if if we develop a a waiting list in uh this particular property. Um, and and they, when you start talking about the qualifications. If if a particular renter um has the ability to cover whatever rent. Um, is being asked, will they be prevented from going into a certain unit? Or how how is that going to be handled? I I'm, I I'm just thinking that. With the attractiveness of this space, uh, you could have a high number of people. Um, who might be below a certain income level. Um, uh, trying to apply to get in. Will additional affordable units be opened up to allow more people of a certain economic status to come in?
I'm going to let Todd McClutchie answer that and it it the the question is, is is, it's. Is good, is great and it works in both ways. Sometimes people have a hard time uh qualifying in because of the low income. But once they're in, sometimes their income rises and they're faced with the uh, the the issue of graduating out. Because of income pre uh of of the qualification. So it, these, these projects are are regulated by the tax credits to finance them. But the way this building is being financed, there will be banding of incomes. So there is more protection against the upside than typically you find in a project. But Todd is the gentleman that deals with this all the time and can tell you more about, you know, how people are qualified in, who's qualified in. That h- how the waiting list works and how how the the solution for uh. But for the person that 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 begins to succeed, because you don't want somebody to succeed and then find themselves non-qualified to live in in the project. Either, right? So Todd, can you, can you deal with those questions?
The 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 program does come with uh with a lot of rules and regulations that we work with on a daily basis. But the the main one that I'll I'll sort of start with in terms of why there are different income tiers. And and the the reason for those different income tiers are to make sure that people are housed properly. So they're not under overburdened with rent that they can't either afford later on, you know, over time. Or vice versa, that they're sort of not paying their fair share. And and what this does is it really allows us to to hone in on what you'd normally see for even affordable housing. Or even some mixed income housing is that it it really targets just one or two levels. This, this allows us to uh integrate with with at least four, four different levels, you know, that we talked about earlier. The forty percent, sixty percent, eighty percent in some market rate. And making sure people again are are housed uh at at the right appropriate levels, so they have disposable income. Uh, and they're not being overly burdened. Um, in terms of being able to create additional affordable. The 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 premise behind this is that we need, just like any other, um, I'll say commercially, but commercial. Residential building or market rate building is we need to meet certain financial thresholds. So we do need to maintain these rents um in order for us to pay our debt service and everything else. Because all of this acts like a, as as if a normal uh, as a normal market rate transaction would. So you cannot create additional affordables through it, but we can maintain these. it, but we can maintain these different levels within the project itself. I don't know if that helps answer your, your question, or if you, I mean, if you need something else, I mean, to talk about it a little bit further.
Mr. Burnett, did you?
It's frozen.
Oh.
Uh, okay. Uh, who else has their hand raised?
Uh, Councilmember Young.
Um, you know what? Lisa had her hand. Lisa didn't get a chance. I, I'll let Lisa go.
Ms. Shanahan?
I think it's, I wanted to unmute myself, sorry. So following up on that, so if people do max out on their income, then what happens to them within the unit? Can you explain that a little bit further?
The good thing about the program, and just to help clarify what Bill was talking about earlier, um, so let's just say you are, uh, a entry-level secretary. You're making thirty-five thousand dollars. What this allows you to do is not only qualify for that forty percent unit, but also allows you to graduate and also work your way up through your profession or if you end up changing professions. So you do have the opportunity to stay within the building. Um, there is a rule about making over a hundred and sixty-five percent of what your original was, but it's only when you hit that level, then you would graduate into the next level. And, and this project certainly allows you to do that. You know, you could quickly bounce from forty percent to sixty percent and so on. Again, only if you hit that hundred and sixty-five percent.
Thank you.
Uh, now Ms. Young.
So Lisa asked the question that I was going to ask, but to expand on that a little bit, so are there other things such as, uh, will they have to pay for parking, or is there some sort of, uh, fee for disposal? Are there things that would be added to an affordable unit that would elevate someone's, um, income? Um, and if someone were to work overtime, like are all those things, um, calculated into their, um, income? Because they're, you know, I, I've heard of examples of people having, you know, possibly working overtime, you know, during a month and making five hundred dollars, and that totally puts them in another, you know, bracket. Um, and that becomes a, a stressful thing, or paying for parking or paying, you know, for trash removal, those sorts of things.
And there, there are a tremendous amount of rules that govern all of that. Um, and I'll maybe cer- I'll, I'll address the, the income one or the, the working overtime or getting bonuses. Um, there is specific calculations that take all of that into consideration. So if you are just working, you know, let's just say it's over the holiday season, and you're working extra hours, that would then be amortized, and there's a specific calculation for it again, that amortizes it throughout the year. So you're not quote-unquote penalized for that overtime work. Um, and, and that's sort of the, you know, one of the fairnesses of the aspects of the, of the overall program. In terms of, um, uh, additional costs for things that you sometimes see in market-rate buildings where people have to pay for amenities like gyms and pools and, and parking and so forth, all of that will be included as part of the affordable rent and as part of the affordable, uh, units. So there's not some, um, um, yeah, hidden, hidden.
Burnett, you were, uh, I guess you left us for a moment. Uh, did you have any further questions to follow up on the answer that Mr. McClutchie gave you?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I did not. Yes, my, I lost the connection, but I'm back. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions?
Uh, Councilmember Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Just wanted to follow up very briefly on Councilmember Young and Shanahan's question. Is debt-to-ratio, um, income-to-debt ratio something that you all considered in terms of affordability? I'm thinking of young professionals who have massive student debt load as well.
Uh, that is factored into the overall calculations. So it's a combination of debt and assets, um, that is worked into it. So you get a, a clearer picture of a person's ability to, to pay the rent, um, and making sure they also have disposable income at the same time.
Great. Thank you for that answer to the question.
Any further questions?
Councilmember Hovellman.
Mr. Hovellman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just have one last question. A lot has been made about the development fee for this, uh, and a, a lot of, a lot of, uh, commentary about it. Can you explain a little bit about that? Is this an upfront, uh, fee, or is this something over time, or how that's actually, how that actually works in relationship to you developing this property and renting this property?
Okay, so the development fee is, is, uh, a stat, is part of a statutory component of the programs themselves. And again, this, we're working within a, a federal program, uh, the Longham Housing Tax Credit Program. So it does allow for up to a certain percentage of development fee that then each state determines whether or not they want to go to that max or they want to reduce it. Um, the state of Connecticut has a sort of a sliding scale as, as to how to determine that developer fee calculation. And in this particular deal is, yes, there, it, it does appear to be a sort of a larger, uh, calculated development fee, but a, uh, a vast majority of that developer fee stays in as a contribution and sponsor equity, uh, for the development. And it actually, it, it, it fills a gap that would otherwise not be able to be, um, filled with other financing tools.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I, I would just.
Saying that, I'm sorry.
I, I would just, just one thing, Mayor. I would just point out that during the past year, we, probably last year and a half, we've asked a lot of questions actually about the developer fee. And, um, and, and, and for example, during a meeting, uh, with Citibank in New York, and Mayor, you were there as well, we asked questions about the developer fee, and basically we were told by Citibank that this is not a typical developer fee. They're not getting, and maybe, uh, Mr. McClutchie, uh, could, could speak to this, um, more, but that they're not getting, um, the typical percentage that the developer would get upfront when the project is completed. Rather, it's more on the backend, and quite frankly, um, McClutchie's have a long history working with Citibank and, um, basically, you know, brought in to help Citibank get this project done, but that generally the developer, the structure of the developer fee here isn't, quite frankly, develop, isn't, is not favorable to the developers. We did ask a lot of critical questions about the developer fee, and maybe Todd or John McClutchie could just speak to that for a moment.
Yeah, the, 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 the majority of development fee is being reinvested in the deal. And as Attorney Capolo just said, uh, we, we've been working with Citibank. I've been working with Citibank for fifty years. Todd has not been working for fifty years. I have. Uh, but Todd has been working with them for the past twenty years. And, um, we have a long, strong relationship with them. We have the same idea, uh, ideas as to community development. And they turned to us when this deal didn't work for them with the other developer and asked us to come in and try to work with them on it. Um, we have agreed that we would defer the majority of this development fee to make this happen. Um, uh, our concern here is our relationship with Citibank, and more importantly, I get in this business fifty years ago to develop communities, and it's a serious part of my philosophy in terms of what I do. Uh, it's something that Todd has been brought up around his entire life, and, and when he graduated from college, wanted to be in this business, went to work for another developer for eleven and a half years, and then came to me and said he wanted to continue to build the business with me. He has the same mentality that I do, and it's the same philosophy that Citibank has. And whether we're working here, and, you know, I heard a comment earlier that we don't, you know, we don't live in Newark. No, we don't live in Newark. I don't live in San Antonio, but we're doing a big deal in San Antonio. We've done a ton of deals in every state in the United States, in section of Alaska and Hawaii. And we've never had an unsuccessful deal. And every community we've worked in has been better for what we have done, in my opinion. And I think you can talk to the mayors there, uh, whether it's Darien, Connecticut, or Bridgeport, Connecticut, or Hartford, uh, 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 New London, um, or go outside of the state and talk to mayors in Buffalo, New York, and, 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 uh, Pensacola, Florida. Uh, it's the same story every time. You know, we're doing this deal because Citibank asked us to do it. We're not making what we would normally make on the deal, and we're still taking a lot of risk. We have to guarantee all these construction loans, because they can't do about our guarantees. And I did hear a comment earlier that somebody would do this for a million dollars. I don't think they would. And if, but somebody's gonna do it for a million dollars, they wouldn't have the balance sheet to be able to cover the guarantees in these construction loans.
Thank you. Um, are there any further questions?
Uh, no.
Seeing, seeing none, then I will ask the, uh, you'll call the vote. I'll ask the clerk to call a roll call vote. You're muted. Okay.
There we go. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Langella?
Aye.
Mr. Sachinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hovellman?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Mr. Dumas? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kiteys?
Yes.
Mr. Theodorides?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Serenides?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Go back to Mr. Dumas. Have we heard from him?
Are we sure that was Mr. Dumas's number?
It says his name.
Because he hasn't answered this evening, so I'm not sure that's his number.
He's on the phone. It appears. Okay. All right.
Okay, so it passes fourteen.
Right.
To nothing.
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you very much to the council. We will now continue on with the agenda. Item seven C one, I believe, um, and that goes to, Miss, no, that goes to, uh, Mr. Sir, Siranides.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, seven C one, approve the request for the honorary naming of the portion of Chestnut Street from Monroe Street, the Mayor place, to Officer Caesar Ramirez Drive. Uh, I'd just like to start by saying, we understand the importance of city ordinances and our responsibility to uphold them, but we also feel like this is a, a special circumstance. Officer Ramirez wa- was a big part of NOLA, not just as a police officer, but also with his voluntary work with kids, his volunteer work with, uh, all the youth programs, and the, um, he was also on the housing affiliate. Um, I feel like this is gonna be a little bit of closure for his family, a lot of the residents that knew him and loved him. I think it's a good idea, even though we are moving up to date a little bit and, and not following the full year protocol, the, the request we put in for September around when school starts makes sense, and I feel it outweighs the fact that we're getting a little ahead of the ordinance on that year.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Serenides. Further questions or comments?
Uh, Mayor, really?
Mr. Burnett?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I know Officer Ramirez was passionate about his work as a Newark police officer, and he loved the community that he served. Um, Caesar knew everyone, and everyone knew Caesar. And I think this tribute, amongst many others, is our way of saying thank you for your service and your commitment to the city of Newark, and I wholeheartedly support this naming of the street in, in behalf of Caesar.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Further comments? You know, I've known Caesar and worked with him for many, many, many years. Um, and it was a very sad day indeed when we found out that he was ill, but he has done so much for so many people in the community, giving so much of himself, not just in his police function, but in so many other ways, helping the Hispanic community, um, when it came to the holidays and passing out food and gifts, and, uh, just doing so many things. I don't think I ever saw Caesar at home. I thought, I think he was always out in the street somewhere doing, um, his due diligence and doing so much for so many. So, um, you know, I know, and I thank the council for recognizing, um, the, the problem with the ordinance and how the ordinance, uh, seemed to be, uh, uh, contradicting itself. And so I, I want to thank the council for taking care of that as well. So without, um, any further questions, Ms. Young, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wasn't gonna speak because it's getting late, but just based on what you said, and, and add, um, Caesar's service, and, and I knew his youngest son. And one of the comments you made is, they wondered why, you know, they were always wondering why he was always out. He was helping other people. And I will say that he, that the comment was the day of his service, it all made sense. And that was a tribute to the work and his commitment in the community, and his family felt that, um, and saw that, because they saw the love in all the people that came out to show their respects to Caesar. And so this is a well-deserved, um, acknowledgement of his service to the city.
Good point. Thank you, Ms. Shanahan.
Yes, I, I'm sorry. I wish I had known him. It sounds like he was just a terrific, um, officer, and we're so lucky to have him in our community. I just wanted to clear up for the purpose of the vote that we're going to take. The ordinance was amended so that we can consider these types of, um, street renaming's in cases such as this. It just has to be a supermajority vote. So we're completely in order to look at this and to, um, take this vote tonight. So I would encourage us to do so based on the wonderful things that, um, this officer did for our community.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no further comments or discussion, um, Ms. Young, Ms. King, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Burnett?
Absolutely, aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Langella?
Aye.
Mr. Sachinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hovellman?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Mr. Dumas? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kiteys?
Yes.
Mr. Theodorides?
Of course, yes.
Mr. Keegan?
If everyone's permission, I will vote twice. Yes, yes.
And yes, okay. Mr. Serenides?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
You have fourteen votes. It's unanimous.
This is a wonderful tribute, and I will make sure that we put together a, uh, a, a ceremony, uh, at a specific time that's appropriate, inviting the young kids, the children, uh, students, uh, from the Columbus Magnet School and from the side-by-side school that he served, um, so well, and make sure that all of the council people are invited as well. And we will definitely have his family there. So thank you again for, for this. Uh, I think next on the agenda is item seven C five. Mr. Serenides?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, Mayor. Seven C five was one of the items that was removed from tonight's agenda.
Okay. And how about seven C seven, seven A and seven B?
Yes, correct. And I'll read them both together.
Okay.
Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement, agreement with Grasso Companies LLC for project RD twenty twenty dash one, concrete curbs, sidewalks in various locations for some not to exceed two million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Authorize the chief of op- oh, sorry, accounts noted. Authorize the chief of operations and public works to execute orders on the contract with the Grasso Companies LLC for project RD twenty twenty dash one, concrete curbs and sidewalks in various locations for some not to exceed two hundred and seven, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents, accounts noted.
Can Mr. Serenides move, uh, comment, Mr. Serenides?
Uh, yes, before I hand it off to Anthony, we have Mr. Carr on the line tonight along with some of his, uh, uh, his junior, um, engineers. We thought it would be a good idea to just mention this tonight, because that was an ongoing problem for a while, those sidewalks. And even though we've been trying to get to them due to different construction projects in the area and, uh, other things that may have taken precedence, they, they managed to get pushed back over the years. We're finally getting around to doing it, which is great. I feel it's gonna be a great asset, asset for the, uh, community down there. It's been a long time coming, and I'm happy to see it finally on the agenda to get done.
Mr. Carr?
Hey.
Hey, Mayor, uh, Mr. Chairman, common council. So just to give a little background, I'll keep it very brief. Uh, we received four bids for this contract. And this is our annual concrete curb and sidewalk contract, which is in conjunction with our paving program. Uh, the lowest bid was received from the Grasso Companies LLC for two point seven five billion dollars. Uh, it's important to note that the second lowest bid and their lowest bid were about two hundred thousand dollars higher. And the fourth bid was actually about one point two million dollars higher. So it's good to see that the bidding is competitive. And just to give an order of magnitude for the scope of work, uh, for the amount of curbing that we're proposing, it's about four and a quarter miles. Uh, for the acreage of sidewalk, it's about two point five acres. And most notably, uh, the areas of priority will first be Woodward Avenue, followed by the Ohio Avenue area and adjacent streets. Um, and again, the, the limits aren't exact, but it's about two thirds of a mile. And the limits for Woodward Avenue would be between Neptune to Burrit. But, uh, as I've been advised by staff, uh, by principal engineer and senior engineer, this is an infill sidewalk, meaning that, uh, we're not gonna stop short. Uh, if, if there's fifty or a hundred feet between north and south of Neptune and Burrit, we'll continue, uh, to improve the sidewalk the whole way. So you have one continuous new sidewalk. Uh, and again, we could increase the scope if the mayor and council approves the change order. We could actually increase scope over there too. So no worries. That whole area will be taken care of and, uh, glad to be a part of it.
Thank you. Um, further comments or, uh, questions? Seeing none? Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Young.
Uh, I'm sorry. Um, so Anthony, you just said if, if we change the scope of the project. And so how much of Woodward Avenue are you talking about? Because it kind of starts at, um, that intersection of South Main all the way down.
So the rough, the rough, uh, linear footage, uh, in miles, not two thirds of a mile, and that's from Neptune to Burrit. But I understand, and again, not being exactly familiar with the area, I know this is an infill sidewalk. So we're not gonna leave any gaps between the newer sidewalk and what we do now. So anything that was done beyond Burrit or beyond Neptune will be a continuous path of, between the newer sidewalk and what's there now. And if you remember, councilwoman, last year, we, um, we included an overlay on the existing sidewalk, just as a patch, as a temporary means to get us to where we are today. But there will, there'll be no old or deteriorated sidewalks left in that area.
And if you could refresh my memory, because I haven't been down that street in a while. So there's that place where there's the open field or the city park. Is there sidewalk there? Do you, do you recall that?
I, I, I cannot, I cannot recall.
I, I believe there is.
There is? Okay. All right.
If there's sidewalk there, we'll certainly replace it.
Would you put in sidewalk if there were not sidewalk?
If there was no existing sidewalk, we most likely wouldn't.
I, I, I can tell you there are sidewalks there because the, uh, parents from Village Creek were concerned about removing snow by the bus stop. So there are sidewalks there.
Okay. Thanks.
Further discussion? Uh, thank you, Mr. Carr. I know that area of Woodward Avenue, especially, uh, when you get just a little bit south of, uh, uh, Burrit, uh, aside, the sidewalks are horrible and you can't even, can't expect a, a, a mother with a stroller or somebody who has a walker to navigate that. This is gonna be a, a really great thing for that area. So thank you. Uh, Ms. King?
And I apologize, Mayor, for leaking out too. We're, we're looking to start September.
Good. You're muted still.
Not a good night. Okay. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Langella?
Aye.
Mr. Sachinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Mr. Dumas? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kites?
Yes.
Mr. Theodarides?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Serenides?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Fourteen.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Yep.
Um, are we now at, uh, seven? A, uh, eight A and B? Mr. Serenides?
Seven, eight, A and B were removed also, Mayor. Were, were the initial announcements by?
Thank you.
Yes.
So now we go to seven D for Recreation Parks and Cultural, uh, seven D two A and two B. Ms. Young?
Oh, it's, do we make the, do we have to, uh, uh, make a motion to suspend the rules? Add seven D Recreation and Park seven A and seven B? A.
Uh, seven D two A and B, is that?
Y- y- yes. Sorry. Give me the papers.
That's the, uh, sports complex for West Rocks.
Yes. Okay. So if I made the motion to suspend the rules, do we have to vote on that or is that just?
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Okay.
So mo- and, and that is to what? Add these two or to change the information?
So it is to add seven A and seven B to the agenda.
Seven A?
You may not have it, Mayor, in front of you. It's new language.
I do not. Why don't you make the motion so I'll know what it is?
Can I just, can I just clarify? Uh, yes, because what, what, uh, the original agenda shows it as items two A and two B, so we're changing that to make it seven A and B.
Okay, so Ms. Young, if you'll make that motion?
So Mayor, is, do we have to go in order? I'm just asking because the last item is finance committee and there was an item off consent. And so we then would end up going back. Is that right, Barbara, or?
I think we can do it.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
You just wanna add?
You're, you're looking at the end of the agenda where it's asking for
Suspension of the rules.
Suspension of the rules. All right, so you're right. Why don't we do this then? Why don't we go to finance? Uh, I believe it's, um,
Seven F five? Yeah, F five.
All right, Mr. Burnett, why don't we do that?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll try to get through this, uh, fairly quickly. Um, so I'd like to move the following resolution. General obligation refunding bonds of the city of Norwalk in principal amount not exceeding fifty-three million dollars are hereby authorized to be issued in the proceeds thereof appropriated in such amount or in such lesser amount as shall be necessary to refund all or any portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bonds and clean water fund project loan obligations and interim funding obligations. The bonds or any portion thereof may bear interest, which is includeable in the gross income of holders thereof for federal income tax purposes pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended, as the issuance of such taxable bonds is hereby determined to be in the public interest. The common council hereby delegates to the mayor and the director of finance, subject to final approval of the president of the common council, the majority leader of the common council and the minority leader of the common council and the chairman of the finance committee of the common council, or any two of them, the authority to determine the number of series to be issued, the principal amount of the refunding bond of each series to be issued and the annual installments of principal redemption provisions, if any, other terms, details and particulars of such bonds, including the rate or rates of interest payable thereon, to make appointments and execute documents referenced in this resolution to execute such other agreements, instruments, documents and certificates necessary or desirable for the issuance of the bonds. Uh, that is the resolution. Um, this approach will, uh, potentially lead to an estimated savings to the city of over two million dollars over the life of the bonds. And, uh, we have, uh, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Dakowitz, on the call to further elaborate on, on this approach, along with, uh, Matthew, Matthew Ritter, who is our bond counsel from Shipman and Goodman LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
Mr. Dakowitz.
Henry Dakowitz, Chief Financial Officer. Um, I, uh, introduced Bruce Chudwick of Shipman and Goodman last month at the council meeting. And I wanted to introduce Matt Ritter, another partner who's servicing our account as new bond counsel. Um, the, the hour is late. I'll try to be very brief. I have created a memorandum that can be circulated uh, and will go into more detail. Of course, Matt and I will answer any questions now. A refunding is comparable to a refinancing of a mortgage. When you have debt outstanding at a high interest rate, when interest rates go down, you would prefer to borrow more money at the current lower rate, use the proceeds from what you borrow to pay off the old debt. And then now, your interest payments going forward are at a lower amount. And you will obtain that savings. That's what you do on a refinance of a mortgage. That's what we're trying to do with the refunding of tax-free bonds. There are many rules and regulations surrounding tax-free bonds. Um, I, I went into it in some detail in the memo, but suffice it to say, we are in a unique market environment. Um, normally, because tax-free bonds avoid the tax when bondholders receive the interest. They usually trade at lower rates than taxable bonds. Good example, if treasury bonds were paying five percent interest, a municipal tax-free bond traditionally would pay about three percent interest. Because without having to pay two percent to the federal government, your after-tax cost is the same. So the buyers are willing to accept a lower interest rate from us because they don't have to pay tax on the interest. We are in a very unique environment where taxable interest rates are lower than municipal interest rates. I've never seen it in my career. Consequently, we will be able to refinance tax-free bonds with an issuance of taxable. Okay? Um, we have had our financial advisor and investment bankers identify about forty-four million dollars of bonds that are outstanding, that would be subject to this refinancing. One of the restrictions on refunding municipal bonds is that you are not allowed to do that anymore before the bonds are callable. Okay? A callable bond is a bond where the issuer, such as Norwalk, can call the bonds away from the holders, the investors, and pay them off before maturity. Okay? With the Tax Act in, uh, December of two thousand seventeen, advanced refundings of tax-free bonds was eliminated. But because we'll be able to refund these bonds with taxable bonds, that restriction will not apply. So we've identified forty-four million dollars of bonds, including some from the WPCA, that as of July first was the last time I saw the interest rate calculations, we would be issuing new bonds at a total, at a true interest cost a shade over one percent, one point zero zero one eight percent. That would allow us to earn a present value savings of two point nine million or approximately six point six six percent of the amounts refunded. Industry standards are such that do not permit a refunding unless we earn at least a three percent savings. We're doing more than double that. Uh, again, present value savings, the calculation is as follows. The financial advisor calculates how much interest we would normally pay on the existing high coupon bonds and compare it to the amount of interest we would pay with the lower new coupon bonds. There's a savings there for each payment. They take all of those payments out and then they discount them back. That's called present value to get an equivalent value today, which summarizes the total amount of savings. It's not annual, it's for the entire refunding. So as of July first, that amount was two point nine million. Obviously, market rates dictate what we will actually save. Everyone is predicting a continued long, um, duration of low interest rates. So we expect that to do well. We intend to go to market first with our forty-two million dollar issue of new bonds, which was approved last month. When we went through the capital project, we expect to close this deal in the beginning of August. So even though we're looking at a little less than two months away, we expect significant savings on this refunding. Um, the memo goes into a little bit more detail. Greg, maybe you can distribute that tomorrow. And Matt and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have now.
Are there any questions of Mr. Dakowitz or Mr. Ritter? Seeing none, uh, Ms. King?
Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Langella?
Aye.
Mr. Sachinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kites?
Yes.
Mr. Theodarides?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Serenides?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
You have fourteen yes votes. You have a majority.
Thank you. And I want to thank, uh, the finance committee and Mr. Dakowitz, Mr. Ritter and Angela Fogel. Um, this is always nice when we can save this amount of money. Uh, and I think the citizens of Norwalk truly appreciate, uh, your efforts and the efforts of the entire council. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item now, um, now we go to the suspension of the rules, uh, Ms. Smith. Or I know there's an item that has to be added to the agenda and that's Mr. Sachinelli.
Yeah, I'd like to vote to suspend the rules to add the item to the agenda from the health and public safety.
Okay, uh, what is the item? If you can, uh, well, first let's vote to suspend the rules. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, uh, Mr. Sachinelli, and then we'll bring Ms. Young in for the, uh, other items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a memorandum of understanding, uh, between the city of Norwalk and Norwalk Hospital. I'll read the entire item into record. This memorandum of understanding is made this fifteenth day of July, twenty twenty by and between the city of Norwalk, municipal corporation existing under the laws of the state of Connecticut acting hereon by Harry W. Rilling, its mayor, duly authorized at Norwalk Hospital. City collective referred to as parties, a nonprofit organization organized and duly authorized to transact business in the state of Connecticut acting hereon by it here at R. Cordu, its president duly authorized. Whereas the hospital operates in the Whereas, the hospital operates in the city and provides a disproportionate share of health and care services to the Medicare population in addition to supporting many programs that benefit the indigent uninsured and underinsured population in Connecticut. Whereas, the hospital desires to participate in the drug discount program established under Section 340B of the Public Health Service Act. Whereas, in order to participate in the 340B program, the hospital must enter into an agreement with a unit of the state or local government pursuant to which the hospital commits to provide healthcare services to low-income individuals who are not entitled to Medicare or Medicaid benefits and no reimbursement or considerably less than full reimbursement from these patients. Whereas, the hospital desires to make such a formal commitment to the city. Now therefore, in consideration of the mutual agreement and covenants contained herein and for other good and valuable consideration, the receipt and sufficiency of which hereby are acknowledged, it is mutually agreed and covenanted under sealed by and between the parties to this agreement as follows. One commitment of hospital provide indignant care. During the term of this MOU, the hospital agrees to continue its historic commitment to the provision of the healthcare to indignant uninsured and underinsured residents of the Connecticut in 2019. This commitment told them approximately $24,033,587 dollars in lost charges. Pursuant to this commitment is the intention of the hospital that indignant care provided during the term of this MOU will range generally between 25% lower or higher than above number. In any event, the hospital will assume that all patients will receive necessary care as required by law regardless of ability to pay. Two, acceptance and acknowledgement of the city. The city accepts the commitment of hospitals set forth above. Three, terms and termination. The term of this MOU shall commence on this date. First above written shall continue until terminated by either party up and up not less than 30 days prior within written notice. Four, notice. All notices required or permitted by given under this MOU shall be deemed given when delivered by hand or sent registered or certified mail. Return receipt requested addresses as follows. Address listed below. Five, governing law. This MOU shall be governed by and construed in accordance with the laws of the state of Connecticut. The parties have executed this agreement as the day, the year, first written above their duly authorized representation, signed by Newark Hospital and City of Newark.
Okay, so thank, I think as a procedural, we have to vote to add that to the agenda. So all in favor of adding that item to the agenda, I just signify by raising your hand or saying opposed, abstentions? So now, Mr. Satchinelli, if you can briefly explain what you just read and what it means.
So this is an agreement to allow for the, for Newark Hospital to kind of act as a function of the city. They need to apply for a 340B program. And in order to apply for that program to be able to continue serving the the low-income residents of Norwalk, they need to have a understanding or agreement with the city to function as a government or municipal body.
Thank you, and that obligates the city really for nothing, no cost, no money or anything like that. It's just a kind of an agreement and a partnership.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Darren Callian, the Law Department. It just that that description was was absolutely accurate. It's a statutory mechanism that the hospital has to comply with among a myriad of requirements to participate in this program. All the city of Newark is doing is accepting their historical commitment as a continual continuum of that commitment, and we can opt out at any time. It's really no detriment in any way to the city to enter to this.
Thank you, Mr. Callian. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Young, thank you for your patience.
I would say thank you to Nick. Okay. So do, so we need to make the motion to suspend the rules to add seven D to Recreation and Parks 7A and 7B?
Yes, please.
I make that motion?
Ms. Young makes a motion to suspend the rules to add two items to the Recreation and Parks 7A and 7B. All in favor to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Young?
Okay. 7D Recreation and Parks 7A authorized Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with TD and Sons, Inc. for Project RNP 2020-2 West Rocks Middle School Proposed Soccer Field Complex for some not to exceed $1,016,078 bid, ace bid, $240,468 light and parking lot alternate, $258,293 concession stand alternate, $149,400 for terrace seat wall alternate, and $36,000 for its safety netting alternate. Account numbers noted. 7B authorized the Director of Recreation and Parks to execute orders on contract with TD and Sons, Inc. for Project RNP 2020-2 West Rocks Middle School Proposed Soccer Field Complex for some not to exceed $170,024.6. Count numbers noted. We have Nick here and Anthony to speak to that.
Okay, let's, Ms. Young moved them onto the agenda, so let's vote to put them on the agenda. That's right, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? The items are now on the agenda. Now, Ms. Young?
Okay, Nick, would you like to speak to the item, I think?
Yes. So I just want to clarify a few items. This item was on the Recreation of Parks Committee agenda last week. It did receive approval. However, it was brought to the attention of the Purchasing Department that there was a a bid that was misplaced that was sent to West Rocks School via in-office mail as opposed to the Purchasing Department. So that late bid or that bid that came in at the end was actually the low bid, and TD and Sons is actually the low bid. So that's the correction we're making on the contract now that you're voting on. In regards to the field turf itself, the project, so West Rocks was funded for design in 1819, funded for 1.5 in construction last year, but that wasn't enough to complete the project, and then subsequently 9,000 was added to this year's budget to complete that project. And again, that's for the West Rocks, West Rocks Soccer Complex, which houses one of our largest programs in the city, NJSA Soccer. So it is a much-needed facility, and the turf project gives it extended playability, extended use into the season and into the night. So it's an important asset or an important project for the city. In regards to field turf, because I know there were some concerns brought up about that, there's approximately 1,000 fields that gets constructed and built every year. One source cites it's about 80% crumb rubber based that's used as part of that project. So this is not an uncommon practice to use crumb rubber infill. A number of studies have been conducted in the U.S. and other countries that are consistent in their conclusions that there's a low potential risk for chemical exposure from crumb rubber and artificial turf fields. Specifically, the Connecticut Department of Public Health conducted a risk assessment in 2015 on this very same topic. The state's reports concluded, and I'll state it verbatim from the report, risk assessments were not elevated into a range of health concerns for cancer or non-cancer endpoints for children or adults at the outdoor fields. They did not conclude 100% reducing any any risk because there's uncertainties with the studies themselves. However, there's a number of ongoing studies, one in particular being conducted and monitored by the EPA and U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission. It's under peer review right now. I've spoken to Deanna DiAmore, our Health Department Director. She is aware of it. She's waiting for the findings as well. So based upon that study, we will take appropriate action if need be. I do want to point out one additional item that was in that report that we're actually following their recommendations. The Department of Public Health assessments found no health concern again from inhaling chemicals at outdoor crumb rubber fields. It's important to note that these fields are typically hotter than natural grass, and it would be best to install the new crumb rubber in cooler months. Considering those factors, we've also taken the additional proportionary measure of using an alternative to crumb rubber. So this field actually isn't going to use crumb rubber. It's going to use this product called Cool Play, which reduces the temperature of the field by 40 degrees. So that's one point that we're trying to reduce there. The Cool Play is actually a, it's a, it'll have a base of sand and rubber, but the topping is going to be a thermoplastic elastomer or a TPE, which meet or exceeds the stringent EN71 requirements used for validating the safety of children's toys and materials. It also requires no additional maintenance or no additional equipment to maintain those fields. We've had the question of why can't we use a cork product or a natural product? Well, cork, when it rains, it floats, so it adds additional maintenance costs to to add more product on top of it as well as to groom it. So this this Cool Play product, again, has no additional maintenance costs and has an extended life expectancy. So crumb rubber and Cool Play has a life expectancy of 10 to 12 years. But if you use like a cork product or coconut product, it's more of an eight to 10-year use for it. So those are some of the issues that I know have been brought up in the past, and I wanted to address it. And again, those things, and I think we're using an alternative product. We're using a product that reduces the heat, and we are aware of some of the research that's out there and monitoring it, and will adjust as need be.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Comments or discussion, Ms. Shanahan?
Are there other environmental concerns about the use of these types of products? I mean, there are some serious concerns about some of the plastic heat that comes off that you've mentioned, but also some of the fumes that comes off these plastics products that people, that the kids are running on. There has been a lot of research that calls this into question, so I'm quite concerned about that. And also the possible impact on our water supplies and other places.
So I know there's been, there's been, sorry.
No, I just was saying, why can't we use a natural product like grass? What's what's the big downside?
You don't get the same playability, and so if you use grass, it dies in the winter here. You don't have the same playability as far, we have a number of programs and kids that play in a short timeframe. So the fields get compacted, and there's additional maintenance requirements as opposed to a natural turf field, which you can use during inclement weather. You can play it longer till nine o'clock at night with lights. You can play it longer into the season, into the colder months, because you're not worrying about grass growing. So those are some of the benefits. We're going with a turf product as opposed to a natural product. In terms of your questions for studies being done on both sides in terms of cancer-causing agents or chemical exposure, again, those have been all inconclusive. The studies that I'm citing is done by the state of Connecticut. It's also similarly been done by New York State and California. And then the EPA is the last federal study to really look at it. So it's under peer review right now, and like I said, the Health Department as well as us will be monitoring what those findings are, and then we'll make adjustments based on that.
So if we put it down and we find out that it's not good for people's health, we're prepared to pull it up?
I honestly don't think that we're going to get to that point. This product's been in use for 20 years plus. It's been used at all levels from professional franchises to college universities. I believe even Yale and Harvard uses a turf product now. So there's been extensive studies done. I don't think it's going to get to that point, but you never know. But it's something we would have to address if it comes to that.
All right, thank you.
Further comment or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much for the background info, Nick. I had a question about the crumb rubber. Because I've read the background material, and I've seen that this is crumb rubber that, as you said, is under that carpet of plastic. And we always associate, especially in soccer, like seeing the crumb rubber come up during a slide tackle. I know our youth are not going to be doing slide tackles, but let's say their cleats kick up this crumb rubber. Is that something we're going to be seeing, like are young people with crumb rubber stuck to their their shin guards, their legs, or is this product completely take that out of the equation?
So this is a plastic material, and there still is a base of crumb rubber at the bottom. You will see some of that, but it's not going to be as bad as some of the other fields that you've seen. And again, this is now, this would be our seventh turf field that we're doing in the city. So there's six other fields, whether they're the football field over at Norwalk High and Brian McMahon, as well as the the multipurpose and baseball fields. We do have it at some of those locations, yes. This product is a little bit larger. It's a little bit heavier than the granular crumb rubber that you're mentioning, and it's coated in plastic, so it's going to be 40 degrees cooler than what the crumb rubber is. But are you going to see it kick up? Yes. Is it going to be as much? No, I don't think so.
And then are there considerations, just to follow up on Councilmember Shanahan's questions, like younger siblings come to watch their older siblings play soccer, and is the crumb rubber going to be such that they can actually pick at it in in the top material? I'm just trying to get at that idea of knowing if kids are going to be at risk, you know, putting things in their mouth as they often do.
Um, yes, if you rub your hands over it, or if you rub your hands down into it, you can grab up some of the granular, yes. That's that's not something that we can prevent. So the blades of grass that are in there have the subbase, they have the fill. Just keep it straightened out and keep it playable. So yes, when you rub your hand on it, you will get some of that in there. Again, the studies did not cite, and I think that was one of the issues, the the effects of direct interjection versus direct contact of the crumb rubber and Cool Play. There's not enough studies being done on how much or how new of that product. So those are some of the variables they talk about in the study, and that's why it's not 100% conclusive that it doesn't prevent any elevated risk.
Okay, and just to follow really quickly, the the Parks and Rec Department's going to then, I presume, do a bit of public education about this unless people are always already so used to this crumb rubber material just for basic safety concerns. I too share Councilmember Shanahan's concern that if we find that these peer-reviewed studies come out, I know the federal government is kind of in the middle of two bigger studies. Are we are we prepared to really remedy this if it's a health hazard? I am concerned as well.
Yeah, it's something that we'll have to undertake. Like I said, it's six fields we already have in place, so it's something that we'll have to address as a system. I believe the cost to do replacement of the infill is about $90,000 to replace the infill. That was some of the cost savings. We were able to recoup it using the crumb rubber. When we replaced the field over at Brian McMahon, we were able to save some of the old crumb rubber there. If we have to replace that, it is going to be a costly item, but if that's what the study dictates, we'll have to do so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. King, would you take a roll call vote on this?
Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Langella?
Aye.
Mr. Satchinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Aye.
Mr. Roberts?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kides? Mr. Kides?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Theaterides?
Yes.
Mr. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Serenites?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
No.
13 votes.
13 to 1, motion passes or carries. Thank you, I believe. Ms. Smith, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mary. I do have one announcement to make, that there is the potential for the July 28th meeting, let me just double check that date for sure, yeah, for the July 28th meeting to be canceled. There are still a couple of committees that have to meet, but we have covered so much tonight that that depending on what happens in those committees, we may be canceling the July 28th meeting. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, and now I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
And I'll make that.
Everybody wants to make that motion.
Yes.
All right, motion to, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. It's been a wonderful meeting. I think a lot has been accomplished, and I want to thank the council members for all your hard work. I know that I certainly appreciate all. I know that I certainly appreciate all the committee work and then bringing everything back to the full council. And I think the people in the community appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.